The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
I'm going to keep it. Cult ordered the March 26th meeting of the Cary Town Council, and at this time I would like to recognize Councilmember France for our ceremonial opening. Please, France.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are at item 1.3, which is the adoption of our agenda. Councilmember France and Councilmember Bush have requested to add a council-initiated item to request that staff investigate and bring back to council options regarding amendment of the current quasi-judicial process. If it is the pleasure of the council to do so, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to item 2.1, which is recognitions, reports, and presentations. Mr. France will present Fit Cary Monte proclamation. Mr. France.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to ask Ms. Colapita, please join me at the podium.
Is that here done?
Perfect.
Perfect.
Awesome. Well, it is my honor to recognize April 2015 as Fit Cary Month in the Town of Cary. Whereas, the town has been recognized as a fit community, a bronze-level bicycle-friendly community, and a bronze-level walk-friendly community. Whereas, regular physical activity has curative and protective health benefits which can improve the quality of life for everyone in Cary. Whereas, the combination of healthy, active lifestyles and healthy eating are critical for maintaining good health and preventing disease. A healthier population also means long-term cost savings for our society at large. Whereas, representatives of National Physical Activity Plan call on organizations and individuals to recognize the importance of physical activity. They encourage citizens to walk, bike, or use public transportation as a healthy, environmentally-friendly mode of transportation. They encourage workplaces to provide more physical activity opportunities for their employees. The Town of Cary Parks Recreation Cultural Resources Department provides hundreds of physical activities and health-related programs each month for our citizens. And whereas, to celebrate Fit Cary Month for 2015, the public is invited to participate in Fit Cary Bingo to win prizes for being mentally and physically active. And now therefore, I, Don France, on behalf of Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Cary, and the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Fit Cary Month in the Town of Cary, and encourage all citizens to become more physically active and support policies and programs that help them do so. Proclaim this 26th day of March 2015. I'd like to present this to you, and please feel free to introduce yourselves and say a few words.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I think that every member of the council knows how fond I am of Cary and everything that you do for Cary citizens. Cary is truly, it's a great life here. As you know, fitness is very important to me, and I'd like to thank you for not only recognizing the importance of healthy living in April, but year-round. The facilities and amenities you present to the Cary citizens allow us all to live fun, healthy, active lives and raise our children in an environment that we know they're going to be young, healthy adults. As you know, my favorite is the greenway. I love the greenways here. What are we up to now in the greenways? About 70 miles of paved greenway. Very atypical for any community, and it's right here in our backyards, essentially for most of us now. So, thank you. That's my favorite. Keep growing it. Please keep putting money behind that. And I'd like to invite all of you, everybody, to participate in the Fit Cary Bingo and join us on April 7th and April 19th to do free walks and runs on the greenway, and I'll be leading those up, as always. And so come out and get a stamp. I can stamp all your hands right now with the stamper, just until I work with children. Thank you so very much. Truly, you give us a great life here.
And just to elaborate, we are offering Fit Cary Bingo this year for town citizens to promote healthy and active events. You can pick up your bingo card at any of our Parks and Recreation facilities here in the town, or you can download it on the Town of Cary website on the Fit Cary page. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you for all your doing to promote health and fitness. And of course, Ms. Ry Colapita, you're like the Energizer Bunny, always encouraging us to keep going, so thank both of you for all you do. Thank you.
My pleasure.
We have visitors in our audience this evening, scouts earning merit badges. If you would, please stand so that we could recognize you. Alrighty, that takes us to Agenda Item 2.2, and I'll recognize Mr. Knapp at this time for an operational update.
Good evening, Council. We're presenting our regular revenue update again this month. Looking at the table, you can see that the prospective revenue surplus for this year has grown some since we briefed you last time in January, up to a little over $2 million, 1.5% of our projected revenues for the year. Whoops, I believe, I need to do this one at a time, excuse me. Looking at where that difference is, however, you can see that while we are seeing a surplus in several areas, the deficit in permit and fee revenue that we pointed out to you in January continues to be a concern. Looking on the good side, sales taxes continue to be up above projections and will be coming in about 5% above the budgeted level. Utility franchise tax is up well after two distributions this year, especially in the electric franchise tax. We think that that new sales tax on electricity is turning out much better than we had expected. But the offset there is of some concern. The permits and fee revenue this year is down about 26% compared to our budgeted projection. Much of this is due to multifamily and non-residential properties and building permits for them. The last year, at this time through February, we had 21 multifamily projects had been permitted. This year, we've had three. That's resulted in about $200,000 less revenue so far. On the commercial side, we've had about the same number of permits, but they have been for much smaller projects resulting in about $300,000 less revenue. Single-family is also down, though not nearly to the same extent, where we have seen a decline of just over 20% in that. I'm having trouble bringing up a slide here. So I'll just wing it.
It's not the first time.
We had projected for this year in single-family that following on last year where permits were fairly level, that we would see perhaps a slight decline from last year as the market got a little bit saturated with building. This is the pattern that's been going on throughout Wake County. What you could see on the nonexistent chart is that in other parts of the county, this same pattern has happened. They've just actually leveled out rather than decline this year. So I think the decline here in Cary is a little bit more than it's been in other areas of the county, but it follows the same patterns of the county, and we're expecting that next year it will probably flatten out before we start to see any growth again in the future. There will, of course, be more building going on, but I think that at this point, the builders are catching up with some of the development that they've done and not pulling new permits at this point. We certainly have plenty of land that's already platted and ready for building. It's just a matter of where the builders are choosing to take their projects right now. So, we think long-term, this is not going to be a concern, but for this year, it has resulted in slightly less revenue. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Mr. Shiger, you have anything to add?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. And I'd like to build and say a few additional things to what Carl has offered, provided to council this evening. He gave a good description of how our current fiscal year budget is progressing and pointed to the concern with the drop in building permits, which again, I would emphasize, has occurred countywide. It's building permit revenue, I should say, that has dropped. A little bit counterintuitive, because we're hearing a lot in the media about the robustness of this area, how rapidly we are growing, and while that is true, the level of building and permit revenue has dropped. That's been throughout the county. Ours has been a little bit more pronounced, probably for some of the reasons that Carl pointed out. So that's an area of concern for us. You saw the other revenue sources and their relative strength in this year. We're expecting something roughly along those lines next year, although they'll be slightly different than what you saw on the screen there. But generally speaking, those are about the levels we expect. One big exception, two big exceptions I want to go over this evening. One has already occurred, and as council is aware, the General Assembly has adopted a bill that eliminated our authority to levy a privilege tax, or what we call typically known as a business license fees. For this fiscal year, losing that source of revenue will cost the town $1.5 million. To put that in context, primarily for our citizens, I think council knows this, is that one penny on the town's property tax rate will generate approximately $2.2 million. So it's a substantial portion of a one-penny tax increase. This loss of revenue is going to have a significant impact on the budget and how we do business. We cannot automatically or easily absorb the loss in revenue, and we'll either have to replace it by increasing our overall revenue effort, or reducing services, or holding things off. And as I have told the council repeatedly over the past five years, we've held off and held off and held off for many years, and that's going to be extremely difficult to do. One other item that I think council is aware of, but I want to make sure you're aware of, and the significance of it, as well as the citizens of Cary, is that in the future, next year to be precise, we could face an even greater loss in revenue depending on the outcome of a legislative proposal that's currently been discussed in the General Assembly. It recently got a lot of media attention, in fact, in the past week, as a particular bill on this item had recently been filed. There is a potential that the current manner in which sales tax revenue is distributed would change, and that change would not benefit the Town of Cary. In fact, based on our analysis to date, we could be losing as much as an additional $2 million annually, once the measure is fully implemented, and that's the most conservative amount that we can come up with, the way the bill is currently structured and introduced and our best understanding of it at this point. Over subsequent years, the loss even becomes heavier. Now frankly, I don't think all the members of the General Assembly really understand that impact, so I'm sure they will be looking at it very closely, as we will, but I think the public and the council needs to know if it goes through as proposed, it will have a significant, a major impact on our budget. It's still early. We don't know the outcome, and again, I'll repeat that, we want to alert you to what is going on in the General Assembly. We're continuing to work with the Cary delegation, and many of the council members are active in that effort to try to mitigate the impacts to our citizens and let our local delegation know what that impact will be. And I think it's important that the council and the public know that our local delegates have been responsive to our concerns, and we appreciate all the support that they have given us in this effort. So we'll see what happens as we go forward. And also, as we move forward, perhaps the next council meeting or through another venue, we'll give council updates on what that will be. Of all the bills that are impacting us, this financial bill is probably the most significant unless it gets some change as it goes through the process. So that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shiger. Okay, we now move to item 3 on the agenda. It's Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda, and if you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic unless it is a public hearing, and you would want to speak at the public hearing because you have more time. There's a three-minute time limit which I will have to enforce to be fair to all of our speakers. There's also a one-hour time limit for Public Speaks Out. There's a timer located on the podium, the speaker's podium, and there's a green light when you first start speaking. After two and a half minutes, the green light will turn yellow, which means you have 30 seconds remaining, and at the end of three minutes, it will be a flashing red light. And at that moment, I will interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers, and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. We ask that groups have a spokesperson to speak on behalf of the groups. We also ask that you reduce repetitive comments. I thank everyone in advance for adhering to our time limits and recognizing that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud from your seat or make remarks from your seats or anything else that might distract from our meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite the first speaker to approach the podium at its time.
My name is Laura Ann Welch, 3504 Lila Court, Raleigh, North Carolina. I was present at most of the Town Council meetings regarding the Pritchett Tract MI Homes development. Staff and council members noted that the Town of Cary rules require connectivity to existing roads, thus a stub. However, it makes sense to do so only if the road to which the connection is made is able to support the heavier traffic that would result from said connectivity. Fordland Drive is not such a road, as those on the Town Council who drove or rode a bike on it noted. Fordland Drive is a twisting, hilly, narrow road with several blind spots and drainage ditches on both sides. Heavy rains leave pools of water where the creek passes over the road. In snow and ice storms, the hills are dangerous. Our neighborhood negotiated in good faith with the Town of Cary and with MI Homes. When the Town Council approved the MI Homes plan, council members said that connectivity didn't make sense for Fordland Drive and that it would have to be dealt with by an extrajudicial hearing. One Town Council member remarked that requiring connectivity made sense when Cary was a small, rapidly-growing town, but that this was not the case now. He suggested that connectivity be revisited and the law changed, adding, "That doesn't help these folks now." Regarding redevelopment of Fordland Drive, the road is fully built with the exception of a couple of lots that are not in the Town of Cary's planning area. Let's instead use the term forced annexation, which does nothing to benefit the large number of us on Fordland Drive and on Lila Court who are not in the Town of Cary's planning district. What possible benefit could come to the town from having a stub built just because it is required by law unless the town is planning to annex the end of Fordland Drive? I wonder about the Town of Cary's plans for our neighborhood, about the transparency of the planning proceedings, about the trustworthiness of the word of the Town Council. It seems that the planners work for the developers in this case. So here is our situation. Our neighborhood came to you with a problem of facing increased traffic, likelihood of more crime, less safety in walking our narrow street. We thought that an agreement had been made. We made many, many compromises and thought that our street would remain a safe place to walk and to drive. We found that to be a lie. One of our neighbors received a message back from you, Mr. Mayor, with a condescending line, "The issue of connectivity is complex and somewhat confusing to those that do not deal with it on a regular basis. I am among the many, many intelligent residents of the Fordland Drive neighborhood who are fully capable of understanding the issue of connectivity and the safety problems that connectivity brings to our little neighborhood. Do not stub Fordland Drive." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Just to point out that we do not have authority to force annex. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members. My name is Carol Gates.
Ms. Gates, could you move just a little bit to your left? There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. My husband's name is Robert Gates, and I am Carol Gates. We've lived at 6016 Fordland Drive for 13 years and were delighted when we found that neighborhood. I'm here to speak about the construction of a stub on the Pritchett Farm Tract leading to Fordland Drive, as well as the elimination of the 30-foot Class A buffer on their plan. My husband and I attended every Town Council meeting concerning the Pritchett Farm Tract, and our major concerns were lot sizes and connectivity. During these sessions, the Town Council members asked the staff to investigate, including the issue of connectivity as part of the rezoning approval process, and unanimously agreed that the Pritchett Farm Tract should not be connected to Fordland Drive. We left the final meeting confident that connectivity would not occur, even though we were disappointed in the small size of the lots in the proposed development. The Town Council asked the residents to work with MI Homes to reach an agreement, and we did that. Earlier this year, we received a plot plan for the Pritchett Farm Tract submitted to the Town of Cary by MI Homes, which showed a 30-foot Class A buffer and a lot with a home blocking the easement between the Pritchett Farm Tract and Fordland Drive. We felt that this plan was in line with what was promised to the residents of Fordland Drive and the Campbell Road communities. Further, it assured us that MI Homes and their engineering firm, Withers and Ravenell, heard the same thing that the residents heard from the council. On January 29th, 2015, we discovered that the Town of Cary's planning department had disapproved MI Homes' original plot plan, and they directed MI Homes to resubmit a second plot plan showing removal of the proposed home and asking them to build a stub to the property line but not connected to Fordland Drive. If there's no intention to connect, why is there a need to build a stub? The residents of the Fordland Drive and Campbell Road communities respectfully request that the council consider the construction of a 30-foot Class A buffer instead of a stub on the Pritchett Farm Tract at the end of Fordland Drive. This approach will retain the easement for connectivity should it become required in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor and Council, my name is Ken Raber. I live at 7,001 Fordland Drive, and I must tell you, I'm as tired of talking about Pritchett Farm as you guys are hearing about it, so I'll try and be brief and not be repetitive. Let me start with my closing comment and where I'll end up tonight. We need open discussions with the staff and council that start with, "How can we do this?" Not "Why we can't do this?" When we started our first discussions on this, council directed us to work with MI Homes. So we put a team together. I was fortunate or unfortunate enough to be on that team. It gave me a good opportunity to get some insight into what was going on, and we were very aware of the connectivity ordinance. I had had several discussions and emails with staff. We understood the requirement. We understood what we were dealing with, but we entered into good-faith discussions with our concerns over connectivity, transition, and compatibility, and it was controversial. It was controversial among all the residents. As you might imagine, there were a lot of strongly-held feelings. The compromise we came up with was not the best, but it was good, and I think it was the best that we could come up with, and I was willing to support it. And today, there are several neighbors that still won't speak to me about it. We were asked to compromise and find solutions to bring them back, work with MI Homes, their attorney, their engineer, and we did that. We went through that as carefully as we could. You have in front of you a series of handouts that talk about the plot plans. The first is the first one that MI Homes provided. We looked at that and saw a home run. We had the 30-foot buffer that was in the zoning conditions, and there was no connection to Fordland Drive. Very pleased with that. And again, we understand that the staff did not approve that and sent it back to the drawing board for MI Homes. What we see now is a complete decimation of what our compromise was, particularly for the buffer. There is now a stub road to the property line, and the buffer has been eliminated. That is very discouraging for us, because the third handout in there was what we had and what we presented to our neighborhood that talked about the zoning conditions. We believe that there's a solution that meets connectivity, the MI compromise, and the zoning conditions, but we're unable to get there, because right now, what we see in front of us is really unacceptable because it doesn't meet what we presented, what we negotiated, what we worked with MI Homes and the residents to put forward. And now we need help. You asked us to compromise. We're asking the town to compromise. We think we can find a solution. We think we have some opportunities, and we need help. We need open discussion that works with "How can we do this?", not "Why we can't do this?" With that, I appreciate your time and efforts. We would like to have further discussions. We believe there are reasonable solutions to this issue. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Landon Lovelace. I'm the project manager for Canterbury Downs, which will be requesting a waiver from the one-year waiting period under discussion item 6.1 later this evening. The previously proposed design has been revisited based on feedback received from council and staff, and I would like to briefly highlight some of the salient points of our redesign efforts. In December, we presented this project during a quasi-judicial hearing and also sought several minor modifications. I'd like to briefly outline those originally requested modifications and also outline how they have been remedied. With the newly redesigned plans, no minor modifications are being requested outside of those which can be approved at the staff level. The first modification was a reduction to the connectivity index in roadway stubs to the adjacent properties. The originally proposed plan called for cul-de-sacs and as a result, reduced the connectivity index and required relief from connecting to adjacent properties. The site plan has been redesigned to adhere to the Town of Cary connectivity standards, including making all required connections and exceeding the connectivity index. It's at 2.5 now, which is twice the required 1.25. The second modification request was a payment in lieu for roadway improvements along Farm Pond Road. The new plan has been modified to propose construction of those improvements consistent with the town's comprehensive transportation plan. The third modification request was to reduce the Davis Drive streetscape buffer to 30 feet. The new plan now incorporates a full 50-foot streetscape buffer, including sufficient The new plan now incorporates a full 50-foot street skate buffer, including sufficient room for a Type A landscape buffer, as well as a meandered 10-foot greenway path consistent with the Parks and Rec Greenway Master Plan. The fourth modification request was a fee-in-lie payment for the Davis Drive median. The plan provides for the widening of Davis Drive consistent with DOT and town of Cary criteria. We're proposing a fee-in-lie for the median, as it's not physically able to be reconstructed at this point due to the existing constraints of the roadways that we're tying to. Since the fee-in-lie is less than $100,000, it will not require a quasi-judicial hearing and can be approved administratively. And the final modification was the removal of one champion tree, and in order to accommodate the town-required widening of Davis Drive, one champion tree must be removed. This is also a staff-level decision, and we have revised the site plan to save all the other champion trees found on-site. In summary, my client has taken staff and council's recommendations seriously and has diligently and substantially redesigned the project to adhere to the town of Cary standards and respectfully requests council approval to waive the one-year waiting period for recent middle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Excuse me. My name is John Budwein. I have been a PGA golf professional for over 35 years. I'm here tonight as a grassroots committee member of Cary Forward. Cary Forward is comprised of Cary residents and Cary business owners who understand what a significant impact the top golf would have on our local economy and community, and we'd strongly like your support in this effort. We are a unified voice that encompasses all aspects of the Cary community, from the local golf coach like myself. I've coached Cary Academy golf team for the last four years and have seen the -- what golf has done to some of these kids as young as the 7th grade. It's a great game for them to give it...
Let me interrupt you. I'm trying to decide if you're just talking about golf or if you're really interested in the public hearing we're going to have later. That's...
Well, it's with Top Golf. It's a rezoning for Top Golf.
Okay, so you'll have a public hearing. You'll have more time to speak.
You're at the wrong place.
I'm at the...
So if you can wait a little while, we'll call on you...
Right place, wrong time.
Yeah.
Right place, wrong time.
So I'll call on you first when we get to the public hearing, okay? And you'll have two extra minutes. Next speaker for public speaks out.
You don't have to use them, but...
Good evening, Your Honor and town council. My name is Margaret Campbell. I was not going to speak tonight, so I will just be very brief. I think that there's something that I need to bring to the attention of my neighbors, and I need to reiterate with you. I know that you already know this, but my family, Carlton, David, and myself, went over to South Hills Baptist Church a few months or so back. We had a meeting with the people that are also developing the land next to the Pritchett property, and I know that you know that's being developed. But what some people don't understand in this group tonight is that with the development of that, there is no outlet to Holly Springs Road, and that the people from all of those townhomes are going to go out Fordland Drive, because there's going to be a cross-street right through the middle of the Pritchett property. They're going to go out Fordland Drive to Campbell Road so they can make a quick right onto Tryon Road and not have to put up with the traffic on Holly Springs Road. And that is not going to be... I mean, we see it all the time. So I know you think that's a little bit out of the way, but it's not. It'll be a quick out for them, and it's not going to be really nice for us. So I just needed to bring that to your attention, because it hadn't been brought to your attention in the people that were speaking before. Okay, so you might want to look back on that. There's no outlet to Holly Springs Road, so they've got to either come out at the stoplight at Cary Parkway, which is going to be blocked all the way. You can't get out on Holly Springs Road at Cary Parkway in the morning, or either they'll just go and make the right and go into Raleigh off of Campbell Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for public speaks out? I'll close. Public speaks out, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting is item four. For the benefit of people watching on TV, I'll take a moment to review our consent agenda items, and one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. We have ratification of resolution for Indian West subdivision. We have a calling of a public hearing for the following owner-initiated annexation petitions: Cameron Reserve LLC 15A02, MI Homes Abraley LLC 15A04, and William &amp; Catherine Hinallotter 15A01. We also have go-pass agreement on our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for public speaks out with one exception. You now have five minutes for your comments instead of three. Our first public hearing is the consideration to close a portion of the right-of-way for Kildare Farm Road. Ms. Lunsford of our staff will present this item. We'll open the public hearing, and council may take action this evening. Ms. Lunsford.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we are here to hold a public hearing for a right-of-way closing on a portion of Kildare Farm Road, which is on town-owned property. This section of right-of-way on Kildare Farm Road is no longer needed due to the Academy Street Improvements Project. This parcel is included in the development of the downtown park. This map shows the proposed closing, and here is an image of how it looks today. There are no utility easements inside the proposed right-of-way closing. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 160A-299, staff published the public hearing notification for four consecutive weeks and placed signs on the site in two locations. The town is the only affected or adjacent property owner, so no additional property owner notification was necessary, and the closing does not adversely affect the public's access in any way. If council has no questions for me, I'll turn the public hearing over to the mayor.
Thank you. This time... Now's the time for the public hearing for... If I can get my mouse to stop. Kildare Farm Road right-of-way, consideration of closing that. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we... That we accept the closing.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second. The only discussion I would add is the town of Cary owns this property, so we're giving up right-of-way to ourselves. It's not a big deal. So, okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
We now move to our next public hearing to receive innocent citizen input on the needs and funding priorities of fiscal year 2016 Community Development Block Grants, CDBG Annual Action Plan. Ms. Stondino of our staff will present the item. We're going to open the public hearing, and no action is needed at this meeting.
Good evening, mayor and members of town council. Tonight is a scheduled public hearing to hear requests and comments for the use of our fiscal year 2016 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. The town expects to receive approximately $530,000 in CDBG funds for fiscal year 2016 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The amount we receive is based on a formula related to our population, housing conditions, and poverty rate, but is largely affected by the amount of funding that Congress allocates to the CDBG program nationally. The CDBG program may be used for a wide variety of activities, including affordable housing, public services, and public infrastructure. However, the overarching requirement is that the funds must benefit low and moderate-income individuals and families. For fiscal year 2016, this will be the 12th year of our CDBG program. In order to receive its annual CDBG funds from HUD, the town must submit an annual action plan that identifies the projects and programs the town intends to support with its grant funds. In addition to this, the projects must be in conformance with our five-year 2015-2019 Consolidated Housing and Community Development Plan. The public hearing tonight is the final scheduled event to obtain public input on the use of the CDBG funds. Staff has conducted two public meeting meetings, and we've also solicited information through an advertisement of the public notice in the Cary News and on the town's website. We also have a 30-day comment period for the public and conducted a formal application project process with our nonprofit partners to gather ideas for projects. After the public hearing tonight, staff will present its recommendations for funding allocations to town council on April 21st. Council will be asked then to adopt the 2016 Annual Action Plan, projects to be funded for fiscal year 2016, to submit to HUD on May 5th. HUD must receive the plan by May 15. This concludes staff's presentation. Mayor, I will turn it over to you to begin the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing for needs and funding priorities for the 2016 CDBG, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Jim Middleton. I'm a 35-year resident of Cary and have been the land acquisition manager for Habitat for Humanity for the past six years. I'm here to speak on behalf of Habitat's desire to receive a portion of the grant for... To build affordable housing and continue to build in Cary. As you know, the Cary land prices are so difficult and so high, it's very difficult for Habitat to find property we can build in over here. But fortunately, through these grant programs, we've been able, about three out of every four years, to find some property that we can do. And last year, we found a lot that we are subdividing into two lots and bringing sewer to it. And this property... The building is going to be, in addition to the town funds to do the acquisition and development, two of our new businesses are sponsoring our homes. John Deere is sponsoring, fully sponsoring one home, and Metropolitan Life is fully sponsoring the other home. So as you can see, our Habitat program, where we use volunteers and contributions from both businesses and civic and church groups, allows our citizens and our businesses to participate in the affordable housing projects that we do. These two companies have been very supportive of us. It gives their employees a chance to volunteer in our community and to work with other groups from our community also. This year, we've identified another lot situation that we think we can divide into two lots that has water and sewer to it, but needs a little bit of sewer extension. So we're asking the council to please look favorably on this as it comes up. We appreciate what you've done in the past, what Cary has done in the past, and hope to continue every year to try to create more affordable housing, which obviously the town needs for its diversity and for employees at a lower end of the income but still work and a lot of our service industries and our businesses and probably some governments in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Tyner, welcome.
God bless. I'm here tonight to say to you thank you for what you've done through this program. Community block grants have helped us do those things that people thought that we couldn't do for those in our community. Tonight, I have for you just to fly here to show you the facts of where we have spent the money and what the money has gone for. Thank you again for helping us, and I know you're going to continue to help us, because where we are, things are happening, and I know you know all about them. We are involved with White Oak School, New School is coming. We're involved with everything that's going on in the community. We just want to say tonight, like probably nobody else will say tonight, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm actually here to say thank you for an opportunity from Tammy Lynn Center for Developmental Disabilities, and I have with us our property and our chief operations officer and Lane Sarver from Sarver Housing. I'm Holly. I'm president and CEO at Tammy Lynn Center. We've had a home in Cary for the last... Since 2007, we've had four adult individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities living there, low income. We were very, very happy to be able to ask for a grant through the town of Cary so we can, between the town of Cary and North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, be able to provide and ensure long-term housing, quality housing, for these four citizens in Cary. So we just came to thank you so very much. We are... We've been a provider of people with disabilities since 1969, and this home is very, very important to the four people who live there and their families to ensure quality housing and allow it to be outfitted so for health and safety and everything else. So we just wanted to say thank you and if you had any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Could you move to your left, please?
My left.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan Reeve. I'm the chief executive officer of The Carying Place, which is a longtime agency here in Cary, which helps homeless working families with children to get ahead. I just came from our weekly Thursday evening program at Greenwood Forest Baptist Church, where we just graduated our 335th family. And she's back on track. She's in permanent housing thanks to our program, and we couldn't do it without great partners like you all. The town of Cary for the last several years have enabled us to purchase through the CDBG grants housing that we own and operate, and we have another request in this year. And thanks to your partnership, we've been able to get eight properties here in Cary, and we're going for our ninth. So again, thank you for your help. Thank you for your support, and thank you for helping us help those less fortunate here in Cary. Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, for this public hearing. Anyone else for this public hearing on CDBG funds? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. The council members have any questions or comments from Ms. Stondino? Seeing none, we'll leave it to you to work out the details. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We now move to our next public hearing on our initiated annexation petition 14825, Lester Rosa Eltrus. Mr. Nicholas of our staff will present the item. We're going to open the public hearing, and council will not take action this evening. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This request is for annexation of approximately 20 acres of property located at 336 Pittard Sears Road, approximately 1,400 feet south of the O'Kelly Chapel Road and Pittard Sears Road intersection. Request also includes 0.84 acres of adjacent right-of-way. Property is located outside Cary's ETJ, and it's currently Zoned Residential 1 in Chatham County. Request is associated with the rezoning case 14 RZ37, and the town council public hearing on that case was conducted on March 12th.
That's... Okay. That's his presentation. Now's the time for the public hearing on annexation 14825, and I would invite the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, ask council members for questions or comments. Okay, we'll see this at a later date. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. We now move to item 5.4, which is the Ridgefield Farms rezoning request. We're going to hear a report from staff, Ms. Bierman, and we're going to have the applicant explain their request. We're going to conduct a public hearing, and council will not take action on this item. Bier.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a public hearing on a request to rezone about 80 acres on Ridgefield Drive, property is located on the east side of Green Level Church Road, north of McCrimmon Parkway. It consists of 10 lots within the Ridgefield Farms subdivision. There are also three lots in the subdivision that were included in a recently approved comprehensive plan amendment that are not included in the rezoning... comprehensive plan amendment that are not included in the rezoning request. This just shows a closer view, um, along the southern portion of the property to clarify the boundaries of the, of this request. The, one of the parcels that is not included in this request, but is part of the subdivision, is basically a flag lot extending from the end of Ridgefield Drive. The existing zoning for the site is R-40. The proposed zoning is R-8, conditional use. Zoning conditions include limiting use of the property to detached dwellings with the maximum density of 1.8 units per acre. The minimum lot size would be 20,000 square feet for lots that have their frontage and access on Ridgefield Drive, and 10,000 square feet for the remaining lots. And the perimeter buffer would, um, include a 20, a minimum 20-foot type B buffer except for a limited portion of the property where a larger buffer is required based, excuse me, based on the adjacent use. There are also several zoning conditions related to traffic mitigations. The applicant is proposing to make some, but not all, of the improvements that are recommended in the traffic study. These two slides, um, list in detail the, the various components of the improvements that are offered. In essence, um, these improvements would occur between, along Green Level Church Road, between McCrimmon Parkway and O'Kelly Chapel Road. In essence, they would include adding northbound and additional northbound and southbound turn lanes along the majority of that area. This would be done through a combination of restriping existing pavement, uh, that's located and, uh, striped out at this point in time, and then adding additional, uh, construction of additional pavement. Uh, the applicant can speak, um, more to that, but that's, uh, in looking at all the details of these conditions, that's, uh, basically the improvement that, um, is being offered. This property is in the Northwest Area Plan. It's designated for low-density residential. There is a note on the Plan Note 6 that, uh, states that an assemblage of three or more lots would be required in order to change the use from the existing, uh, very low-density, um, existing condition to a low-density, um, status. The recent change to the comprehensive plan amendment that you may recall included changing from medium to low-density resident, residential for the future Land use plan designation. A portion of the site is impacted by stream buffers and field determination of these features would be made at the time of the subdivision plan review. This shot, slide shows existing and proposed greenways and street-side trails in the vicinity of the property. McCrimmon Parkway and Green Level Church Road are designated as major thoroughfares, and you can see here, uh, in the, with the blue lines, there are some, um, the existing and future collector roads that are in the area as well. On Cary's transportation plan, the regarding traffic, there is a future C-Trans route along, uh, proposed along Green Level Church Road. This is a notification map that indicates the properties that were notified at the public hearing. We did not receive any protest petitions during the time that, uh, property was advertised. I did receive several calls requesting information. That concludes staff's comments and following comments from the applicant. I'll be, and the public hearing will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bierman. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Town Council. It's great to see you all again. My name is Adam Ashbaugh. I'm a partner with L-Star Management, um, and we're here representing the 10 property owners, including the two owners who have chosen to stay and live in the neighborhood after we develop if, uh, if we get that opportunity. As Mary pointed out, um, the, this request really is a continuation of what you all approved unanimously in the down, uh, reduction of density for the comprehensive plan amendment from medium-density residential to low-density residential. We've worked very closely over the past few months since that approval with both the Town of Cary Planning and Transportation Department, as well as Wake County Schools, to, um, not only complete the traffic impact analysis that was required prior to these rezoning hearings, but, um, also to understand what the school might be doing in terms of transportation improvements and what we might offer as a part of our development. This request is really done in, in response to, uh, clear direction that we've heard from council. Number one, the desire for low-density, high-quality development. Number two, addressing the concerns of the impact of new development on schools. And number three, the, um, the opportunity or the, the requirement to provide transportation improvements to address the impact of traffic generated by any new development or, or denser development that's what, than what currently exists there. Number one, again, back to the, the low-density, density is limited to a maximum of 1.8 units per acre. This actually goes beyond what we asked for and, and received approval for, the one to three units per acre that low-density, uh, LDR allows. So we're, we're maximizing this at, uh, 1.8 units per acre. This basically only adds a total of 57 lots above what we could develop on 80 acres under the current R-40 zoning. So we're, we're capping the total density at 144 lots, again, which is 57 above what we could otherwise develop with the current zoning. Number two, again, it, we, we feel like we've, um, we're addressing the concerns of impact on schools. We've worked, again, very closely with Wake County Schools to understand their plans for facility expansions in this area. The timing of our build-out, I think, is important to understand, and as it relates to the schools' plans for, for build-out. The anticipated timing of this development, should we get your approval, is, of course, we would have to then go through site planning and construction plan approvals. Start of construction would, I, I can't anticipate that start of construction would be any earlier than late 2015. The first homes would probably not be completed until mid-2016. Uh, and then, this development is likely to build at about 50 to 75 homes per year, and so the complete build-out probably wouldn't happen until mid-2018. Um, and this, again, this coincides nicely with the Wake County Schools' plans for construction of additional, uh, schools. Number one, elementary school E-33 site, which you're currently running a parallel path, or they're running a parallel path with our rezoning, uh, request, that's slated for opening in 2017. Also included in the current, uh, bond for school construction is, uh, two additional elementary schools, E-37 and E-38, with, which are both slated to open in 2016, and Green Level High School, which, uh, H-7 is how they categorize that, that's slated to open in 2018. Furthermore, an additional middle school, the M-16 site, which you may be aware of, is just a couple miles north of this subject property, and it's proposed to be included in the next bond issuance. Another important item to point out, again, in working with school officials, it was discovered that several of their, of the recommendations for transportation improvements that were included in their TAR were also duplicated in ours. And so our proposed conditions, uh, complete some of those recommendations that were placed both on the school and on our, uh, on our project. And so by offering to do these, we feel like we're taking a little bit of the burden of the cost off of the school system. And so that takes me to the third point, which is, um, our proposal, again, although we're only adding 57 homes to what could be done here, we are, uh, providing significant transportation improvements. With our proposed conditions, our development and, and by the time we're done with the road improvements that we're doing, we would basically create two full travel lanes all the way from McCrimmon Parkway to O'Kelly Chapel Road, with the exception of, uh, frontage where, uh, either adequate right-of-way doesn't exist, or development appears to be imminent. One of those is right across from the Wecroft Avenue intersection there at Green Level, where I know there's been a couple of rezonings that have come in and withdrawn, and so we feel like what we're offering is, um, we'll, we'll take care of everything except where development is, is pretty much imminent to happen. So in summary, we're proposing a high-quality, low-density development, which is compatible with the surrounding community and developments. L-Star, for, really, first and foremost, we view every development that we do as a reflection of our desire to create high-quality projects, communities that we can be proud of in the future, and, and that the town can be proud of as well. We've listened not only to council and staff, but the desires of the property owners, not only the, the folks in Ridgefield Farms, especially the two who are going to continue to live here after we develop this site. But as you may recall, uh, a couple of years ago, we came in and we did the piece across the street that was, is surrounded by the Wecroft development. I think it speaks volumes that we were able to work through the issues that the Wecroft folks had at that time. We were now getting compliments from them, emails and phone calls that, hey, if you're going to do the same thing across the street that you've done here, we're, we're so happy with it, you not only lived up to your promises, but you've gone above and beyond your promises. And so we think that speaks volumes about the quality of development that we're planning to do here. And so with that, I thank you for your time. I thank you for your consideration of this proposal, and I'll be here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Now's the time for the public hearing for rezoning, R-14 R-E-Z 17, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is, my name is Don Nepper. I've been a resident of Ridgefield Drive, me and my wife and children, since 1984, when, I think we were the first house that was built on that road. I'm here representing, uh, our neighbors and the residents of Ridgefield Drive, and I believe they're up over in this area. If you'll wave or do something to let the council see who you are. I and the other residents of Ridgefield Drive would like to speak in favor of this zoning request. For all the reasons Mr. Ashbaugh's already said, but I'm not going to repeat them all, don't worry. One of the reasons we're speaking in favor of this zoning change is that the new development will be a special place to live, and one I think this council will be proud of when it's done. Two of our residents will continue to live in the new development, and we have a desire and obligation to protect, help them protect and maintain their quality of life. Because of our desire to protect the quality of, quality of life for our existing residents that will stay, we marketed this property with performance-based RFPs to at least seven developers that I could count before I came here. There may be others. We invoked criteria by which we evaluated these offers and proposals. In other words, purchase price was not the only criteria. Mr. Ashbaugh with L-Star originally gained our confidence by listening to what we wanted, particularly the people that were going to stay. The site plan L-Star plans to submit is environmentally sensitive to the streams, the stream buffers, the natural areas, and it's, and it's a beautiful site if you've never seen it. There's, there's some beautiful land out there. They incorporated many of the suggestions made by our neighbors to accomplish this. Two of the conditions that I want to address here are, one, we ask for no mass grading and clear-cutting of trees, and we ask for reducing the density of the development. For the mass grading component, when most of the developers realized we were serious about this requirement, many of them dropped out. They just weren't interested. We insisted on and we attained a provision in our contracts that allows for, uh, no mass grading. It's in our contract. For the lower-density requirement, when we mentioned this lower-density to developers, most again were not interested. However, L-Star partnered with us to make that happen with their proposals and site plans. The initial reduction in density that this council recently approved with a comprehensive plan to low-density allows for development in the range of one to three units per acre, and this zoning request reduces it even further to 1.8 units per acre. In summary, these two requirements that are included in our contract with L-Star, lower-density and no mass grading, should make the new Ridgefield development a special place. Most developers did not embrace these two attributes, and believe me, they were not easy to obtain. If this property does not develop or redevelop this time, it'll redevelop in the future, there's no doubt about that, and I'm sure you're aware of that. The next time, possibly with a different board, people may come in with a higher density. If the limit on mass grading is not captured now, it probably won't happen again. This board has the opportunity to capture these two very important attributes by approving this zoning request, and we sincerely hope that you will not pass up this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nepper. Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else for this public hearing? We're going to close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I just have a quick question. If either our staff member or the applicant could give us the lay of the land, I'd actually like you to go, well, maybe to the bigger picture you just had on there, if that's okay. Can you point out to us where the residents who are staying own property? And can you explain for us what the triangle to the northeast corner of this, that's not inside the project, what that use is, or who owns it?
Just, I'm not, I don't know.
Yeah, she, she put that up there. We could decrease the red bar by approving this. Look at that. There's that missing link.
I think this is the slide.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. So, um, to the right of where it says R-8 CU, in that, that right hand, no, I'm sorry, in the northeast corner there. Keep going to the right.
East.
Yep, a little bit, yeah, right there. What is, who owns that and what is the nature of that?
That's not part of this subdivision. It's, I believe it's, um, this is a separate ownership. I know this port, this parcel in the green is an open space, uh, is open space for part of the plan development, uh, separate plan development, Cary Park, I believe. This is just a separate ownership on, um, this, this area.
Okay. And can you tell us which parcels? I presume the one at the, on the bottom right is, was one of the two parcels that where somebody's going to stay living?
There are actually three parcels and two owners, I believe.
Okay.
Uh, one parcel is, uh, this one, and then the one below it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then the other parcel that's part of the subdivision is this one.
Okay.
Is on the north side.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Prince?
Um, yes, the, and this is either for staff or the applicant. The previous speaker at the, during the public hearing, mentioned a condition of no mass grading, but I don't see that on the list of conditions.
There's, there's not a specific condition related to mass grading. From the town's standpoint, it would just be the, the standard requirements that apply to, to low-density development for the grading.
So how do we ensure that what the residents and the property owners currently think they're getting, how do we ensure they actually get that?
I would need to refer to the property owner or the, um, the speaker for, for that. I'm, I would assume that it's in reference to the lower density and the fact that the lots are 10,000 square feet and 20,000 square foot minimums that, um, where typically you don't have as much mass grading as you would with much smaller lot sizes. But I would need to, to refer to the, the applicant or perhaps a previous speaker for their understanding of what that means.
Okay. It sounds like it's in the contract between the sellers and the buyers, so I guess, what happens if, what happens if you don't adhere to that?
Well, number one, I have no problem adding that as a condition to our rezoning application. Um, I've, I've understood in the past that zoning conditions, planning staff has told us they want them, uh, committed directly to things related to The only grading that we would do during construction is construction of the roads, the utilities, and the BMPs, and then individual lots would be cleared, graded, and constructed, you know, at the time when the individual lots are built on. So, when, when our commitment to the Ridgefield Farms residents, when we say no mass grading, we mean, we're not going to knock down the trees on 50 lots at a time and grade out pads. These are all going to be, you know, high-end crawl-space-type construction homes that, again, only, the only grading we would do would be for infrastructure and utility installation.
Okay. My next question is, 20,000 square-foot lots, and then 10,000 square-foot lots.
Yes.
Are we going to have a 20,000 square-foot lot right next to a 10,000 square-foot lot, or is there going to be some?
I wish I could show you the site plan. I wanted to bring the site plan with me, didn't I? I pushed and I pushed. Let me show them the site plan. Really, part of the...
It wasn't a zoning condition.
I know. Really, part of the agreement, especially with the property owner, immediately at the entrance there, okay? And also, the owner at the end of the cul-de-sac. The concern was, we want large lots fronting on Ridgefield Drive. We don't want to change the nature of the neighborhood as we go in and out of our neighborhood. So, what we agreed to do is, any lot that fronts on Ridgefield Drive will have, anything that has a driveway fronting out there has a minimum requirement of 20,000 square feet. The 10,000 square-foot lots would then be situated in the back. We have another private agreement with the landowners that any lots that are back-to-back to each other require a minimum 10-foot undisturbed buffer. So, again, that's not something that is particular to zoning, as we've understood from staff. If that is something that you'd be willing to incorporate into the approval, I'm happy to offer it, but that's, that's just why it's not in there. But it is in our private agreement with the underlying sellers.
Thank you.
Do you want Ms. Beerman to address Mr. Francis's questions, because it sounds like you might, or looked like you might have some answers?
Right. With regard to the grading, when they come in for the site plan, because it's the low-density development, they can only, per the ordinance, they would grade the infrastructure and the roads, and then grade the lots individually separately. So, that, that general provision is already covered in the ordinance, so we wouldn't accept a zoning, we wouldn't need a zoning condition unless it was something that was more specific than that.
Could you go back to the traffic slide of what was proposed and what was accepted and committed, and maybe the applicant can speak to why?
These, the two slides that are here show the various components of what the applicant is committing to. I don't have a slide that shows the details of all of the requirements that were recommended in the traffic study. That is in your staff report, so they are a little bit different. Someone from our transportation staff may be able to better address, you know, a little bit more of those differences, but, or the applicant.
Well, I noticed in the staff report that there were a number of these conditions that had an alternate one and an alternate two for almost everyone. So, I was curious, what makes the termination between alternate one and alternate two?
Generally speaking, alternative two was a traffic signal, but I'll let, I'll let Jerry speak to, speak to that.
We studied two different alternatives, because they have cost implications for each one. One of the alternatives was, basically, we needed another through lane in each direction on Green Level Church Road, which was quite expensive and may not occur. The other one option was, basically, at some of these neighborhoods that access on to Green Level Church Road, they have a very, very difficult time making a left turn out during peak times of the day, and that's where the poor level of service was showing up in the traffic report. The only way to mitigate that type of issue would, would be looking at installing a traffic signal. But, again, in order for a traffic signal to be, to be installed, they would have to provide a lot more justification for installing it, such as meeting traffic signal warrants in accordance with NC DOT standards and things of that nature. And the likelihood of that occurring is probably, probably not quite there yet, and so, the applicant themselves felt like they would rather do as much of the lane, extra lane widening in each direction, which would have a really, a better chance of solving the, the transportation issues along Green Level Church Road than, than put a condition about, well, we'll look at doing a signal, but probably it's not going to happen anyway. So, I think that the improvements they're offering is substantive, that they can make cap and can provide immediate relief in some of those areas of Green Level Church Road.
So, just so I understand, because we get a number of complaints about Green Level Church Road, it can be hard to make a turn out of that. So, it would only be widened right in front of, actually, the southern port of what is currently that neighborhood, just right in front of there? Or would they go north of that?
Really, what they're doing is, there's a, well, again, along their frontage, they're doing a significant amount of widening, and that's a pretty big stretch of Green Level Church Road. There's also many developments that have, that have built during the years on Green Level Church Road have already widened out the roadway. So, in essence, we have a lot of pavement out there that's not being used now. And really, what they're doing is, they're going to take that pavement that's unused now, fill in a few gaps, such that they can then make those unusable areas a through lane. So, we're actually getting some, some now benefit out of those gap widens that we've had developers do through the years, so.
So, they'll be doing those connections?
They'll be, well, some of them, and again, he, he, Mr. Ashbaugh said during his presentation, there's a, there's a couple properties where he's going to have difficulty getting the right-of-way, or, or I think in his mind, that it's probably going to redevelop anyway, and they would do their improvements, so that that would fill in the remaining gaps. But I will say that a lot of the improvements, the suggestions that were in the report about providing another through lane at all these major side entrances, they're generally taken care of.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Beerman. This will go to the Planning and Zoning Board at a future meeting. I do thank all the residents for being here and for having a spokesperson on your behalf. That really makes things much more efficient and easier to understand from our point of view. Thank you all for being here. And like I said, it will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their consideration. They'll make a recommendation to council, and we'll see it no sooner than two months from now, and probably longer than that, I'm guessing.
Within the next one to two, two months, probably.
Okay. Thank you. We now move to item 5.5. It's the Cary Town Center rezoning request. We're going to hear a report from staff, allow the applicant to explain their requests, conduct a public hearing. We will not take action on this item this evening. Instead, we're going to refer to the Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Beerman?
This is a public hearing on a request to modify an existing zoning condition applicable to a portion of the Cary Town Center Shopping Center site, which is located on southeast Maynard Road between Walnut Street and Cary Town Boulevard. This is a vicinity map. The yellow line shows the boundary of the lot that's the subject of this request. This is a closer view showing the boundary, where you can see the existing buildings located on the site. The existing and proposed zoning district is general commercial conditional use. This property is currently subject to 19 zoning conditions. These are conditions that were approved with the previous rezoning case that was approved on March 8th in 1990. This request consists of a proposed change to one of those conditions, condition 16, and it would increase the maximum building height from two stories to three stories for a portion of the site. This shows in green the area that is included in the proposed change to the height limit. It's been defined by the applicant in his, the zoning condition revision offered as a distance of 1,000 feet from the boundary of the common property line with the Triangle Aquatic Center. Just as some background information on this particular site, there has been discussion, there's been a recent article in the paper regarding that this is intended to accommodate a specific recreational use. I do want to emphasize that this public hearing is strictly for the increase in the height limit. It's not related to any specific use. Any use allowed in the general commercial district could take advantage of any of the changes that are adopted. And again, this is limited to strictly the change to the, from the two to three-story height limit on that portion of the property that I indicated. If the proposed use that has been discussed is pursued, if the rezoning is approved, then it would require a quasi-judicial public hearing before the town council, and any specific concerns related to the specific development of the property would appropriately be brought forward at that time. So, I just wanted to point that out in the context of the purpose of this hearing. The land use plan shows a designation of commercial. This is a developed site, so there are no stream buffers or constraints shown on the property from our GIS maps. This slide shows the greenway sidewalks and street-side trails that are in the vicinity of the property. Walnut Street, Maynard Road, and Cary Town Boulevard are all major thoroughfares, and then you can see some nearby collector roads as well. There are several existing C-trans route and one future-planned C-trans route that go adjacent to the property or on the property, and also one Triangle Transit Route. This shows the notification map. These were the, all the properties that were notified of the public hearing. We did receive a number of protest petitions. There were a total of 41 protest petitions submitted. It is a valid protest, so it would require a three-quarters, three-quarter vote, affirmative vote in order to approve the rezoning request. The concerns that were expressed in the protest petition centered on a number of items that are broken down here, quality of life, building height, lights, noise, privacy, traffic concerns, visual appeal from the standpoint of the adjoining neighborhood, concerns related to the decrease in property value, hours of operation. One noted an inconsistency with the Imagine Cary plan as it's moving forward, and then 22 of the petitions did not list a specific reason. That concludes staff's comments. Following the applicant comments in the public hearing will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Beerman. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group. Here on behalf of the applicant, CBL and Associates. CBL is the owner of Cary Town Center, which is the subject of this zoning case. Here with me tonight is Mr. John Michelle. He can answer any questions that you all have about the mall in general, or this zoning case specifically. John is the Vice President of Development and Redevelopment at CBL. The redevelopment, as it relates to Cary Town Center, being the key term. As I was preparing for tonight and trying to express to the council why, why this was so important to CBL, why it was so important to the town, and trying to do so succinctly, I realized that you all have already done it for me. In the Imagine Cary Community Directions Report dated February 20th of 2015, and in that document on page 10, which you all are abundantly familiar with because you created the document, where will we shop and dine? Policy recommendation number one, facilitate redevelopment of underperforming activity centers. Policy intent, address underperforming activity centers that are having an impact on community character and property values, and encourage developers to reinvest in activity centers. Policy two, focus commercial uses within mixed-use activity centers. Policy intent, uphold adopted land use policies that direct commercial uses to occur within activity centers. Policy three, support the development of a limited number of premier activity centers. Policy intent, allow for development of a limited number of high-quality, vibrant, mixed-use centers that provide a mix and intensity of uses that is higher than is found in current activity centers. Included in that list are Downtown Cary, Austin Town Center, Crossroads, McGregor Village, North Harrison, Waverly Place, the state-owned property, and Cary Town Center. The town recognizes the need for Cary Town Center to be an important part of the community. It's in a regional activity center. Policy number two, with respect to focusing commercial uses within mixed-use activity centers, that recommends upholding the existing land use policies the town has already adopted with respect to regional activity centers. The regional activity center is the largest activity center that the town has, per the land use plan that is designed to support 80,000 to 150,000 people. It's designed for uses that necessitate a specific type and a specific higher intensity of users. That's what a regional activity center is designed to do. It also recommends maximum building heights of 10 and 11 stories. Now, we don't have a lot of that in the town, but as it relates to what the town has expressed in Imagine Cary, and what the town has expressed in the existing land use policies, a rezoning to accomplish a three-story maximum height is more than reasonable in light of the 10 and 11-story height limits that are already included in the land use plan. This is where we want intense development. This is where we want redevelopment. For a lot of people, this is the gateway to Downtown Cary. The town has spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of the town's own money making Downtown Cary something we can all be proud of. And I think the town has done a fantastic job. I'm anxious for the hotel to open. There have been a number of things that have happened in downtown that, that wouldn't have happened but for the town of Cary, but for you all stepping in and saying, we want this to happen. Cary Town Center is the front door for a lot of people to get to Downtown Cary. Cary wants a successful, a vibrant, and a successful Cary Town Center, and CBL wants it as well. This zoning case, while exclusively with respect to a height limit and designed for a specific use, which, again, as Mary put so eloquently, is not before you tonight, you'll see it again if the zoning case is successful. This zoning case is step one, and what will ultimately be a long-term redevelopment plan for the mall. The mall, over the years, and I don't need to tell any of you this because you're familiar with the mall, the mall has struggled. Sears closed its doors at the end of 2014. While it was unfortunate, I think everybody saw the writing on the wall. Sears has not been a, was not a successful anchor tenant in the mall, and there are several other similarly situated tenants at Cary Town Center. It is a struggling mall, make no mistake about it. CBL has done a fantastic job of, of keeping it, you know, making it look good. You walk around the mall and you get the appearance that it's a mall that's doing well. It's clean, it's safe, but it doesn't have the type of tenants that a regional shopping mall needs in order to be successful. This zoning case is step one in revitalizing the mall as a vibrant part of the fabric of the town of Cary. So, we are very excited to be here. We're excited for this to be step one. We're excited to share with the town our, our plans in the short term, as well as our plans in the long term, for what Cary Town Center will be, and what, what CBL believes Town, what Cary Town Center can be in the 21st century. I want to hit on a couple of things, just briefly. The first relates to the protest petitions. There are a number of protest petitions. If you look at the reasons enumerated in those protest petitions, I believe a lot of those relate to a specific use, and have very little to do with an adjustment from two, two stories tall to three stories tall as a maximum height on a portion of the existing mall. The reason why those, we drew those protest petitions is because we've been very straightforward with the community. We had a meeting in December. We weren't trying to hide the ball from anybody. We wanted them to be aware, this is what we're trying to do. And even though the zoning is a small portion of that, we wanted to engage the community in a meaningful way. We wanted a meaningful dialogue with the community. We didn't want the community, after this zoning case were approved, to come back and say, why didn't you tell us this is what you were doing in the first place? So, I think a lot of those protest petitions are built around a specific use, which really doesn't have a lot to do with the case that's before you all tonight, and which will ultimately be before you all come June or July, when it happens to make its way back. The second point is, there are a lot of items that are identified in those protest petitions that are items that we have, our team has engaged consultants on to aid the community in understanding what those impacts will be. The second point is there are a lot of items that are identified in those protest petitions that are items that we have, our team has engaged consultants on to aid the community in understanding what those impacts will be. And a lot of the people who submitted protest petitions didn't show up at our most recent neighborhood meeting. That occurred two Tuesdays ago, and we had lighting consultants, we had noise consultants, we had traffic consultants, we had an appraiser there to talk about those issues that folks had expressed as concerns back in December. The vast majority of people who submitted protest petitions early this week did not attend that meeting. And for the folks who are here who didn't attend, I would welcome you again to reach out to me and let me know if you want to continue the dialogue and express your concerns. We are going to continue working with the neighborhood. CBL wants to be a valued asset to the town. They want to be a good neighbor. They want to be a good neighbor to the folks in Ivy Meadows. They want to be a good neighbor to Triangle Aquatic Center. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, I'll reiterate, we're very excited to be here. The mall is incredibly excited about the future of the mall, and this is a big part of that. And so with that, we would respectfully request that you all support this rezoning as it goes through the process.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Now's the time for the public hearing for the Cary Town Center rezoning, and I would like to invite the gentleman that I had to interrupt, if he would please come back and start us off.
And Mr. Mayor, may I just make a comment to clarify and follow up on a couple of things Mary said, and that is that this public hearing is on the, on three floors only.
Right.
And because it may be followed by a quasi-judicial hearing on a special use, it may be the better practice of council to discourage any comments from the public that go toward that ultimate use.
And to follow up a little bit more on that, for people that don't understand, in quasi-judicial public hearings, we're not allowed to hear or have a conversation about anything related to that quasi-judicial hearing until the night of that actual hearing. So by providing information, you could make it difficult, I guess, for us.
Create procedural issues.
Right, create procedural issues. So if we could just focus on the height issue, which is what is the decision before us, well, it's not a decision tonight, but it's the issue before us that we will decide on at a later date. Having said that, please continue or start over.
Thank you.
Feel free to start over.
Well, as you can tell, it doesn't take a lot of brains to be a golf professional. But anyway, again, my name is John Budwine. I'm here tonight as a grassroots committee member of Cary Forward. Cary Forward is comprised of Cary residents and Cary business owners who understand what a significant impact Topgolf would have on our local community, and we strongly support this project. Am I not doing this correct?
When, if, if this rezoning goes through, turn the clock off, we'll start it back. If this rezoning goes through, then there will be a quasi-judicial hearing on the proposal, if that proposal goes forward, and that would have to do with golf.
So then I can come back.
Then we're talking about golf. Tonight, we're not talking about golf.
So just talk about whether you think three stories is good for the mall or not.
That's, that's what we want.
Three stories is excellent for the mall. I think anything that we can put at that mall to revitalize Cary and that town center would be awesome, whether it's a golf facility, skating, it doesn't matter. We need to have something over there that will revitalize that mall. It's, it's, it's like you said, it's going downhill, and I'm very in favor of having three stories over there.
Perfect.
Thank you. I will be back.
I would invite our next speaker forward.
Mayor, councilors, thank you for-
You can pull that mic up if you want. There you go.
Mayor, councilors, thank you for your time this evening to hear our concerns regarding the rezoning at Cary Town Center. My name is John Sorrell. I live at 1122 Ivy Lane, which is one of the properties that backs up directly to Cary Town Center. Little background, I'm an NC Registered Professional Engineer. I've worked in the land development industry my entire career. We purchased this house about a year and a half ago, and when I did, I did my homework. And what I found was the issues regarding the density at Cary Town Center relative to the existing single-family residential neighborhood adjacent to it in Ivy Meadows had been evaluated in the 1990s. And the property owner had agreed to a laundry list of zoning conditions to mitigate the, the difficulties that the adjacent density caused. I relied on those protections that had been agreed to and put in place when I purchased my property. I'd like to point out a couple of those zoning conditions that were specifically listed. There's a 10-foot berm and an eight-foot fence that was required, an undisturbed land buffer, a 250-foot building setback, and there's a total height restriction on the property as well as a two-story zoning condition. All of those pieces work together to form some geometry, and that geometry very effectively screens the existing property. Moving or changing any one piece of that puzzle negates the screening that was agreed to in the 90s. So I'd ask you to not consider removing protections that have been previously agreed to and put in place by our prior council. That being said, I have worked in the land development industry, and I'd love to see the mall redevelop into a vibrant use. My second concern with this redevelopment is the location of the proposed three-story use. It's a little odd to see the highest, most dense use on a property adjacent to the single-family residential and the current retirement community off of Convention Center that's under construction. Typically, in planning processes, you see transition and buffer between incompatible uses. It's a little bizarre to see this use more dense in this corner of the property. So I'd invite CBL to return with alternatives for redeveloping this property, potentially with a different proposed use that is not putting their most dense disruptive uses in this corner of the property. That's about all I've got, but I appreciate your consideration and look forward to the end of this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can pull the mic down. There you go.
Excuse me. Tall fellow, short fellow. Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. I like to come to the Forward Group and say I'm a member of the Cary Forward Group. I have lived in the Cary area since 1965. Cary came to me. I didn't come to Cary. So I am in favor of the three-story building because I helped put shopping center there back in the 60s. We had to drive to Crabtree, to Cameron Village. That was the first shopping center in Cary, other than Roses up at South Hill. So I'm in favor of putting this in our area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. My name is Jamie Schwalder with Parker Poe Adams &amp; Bernstein out of Raleigh, North Carolina, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Triangle Aquatic Center, which you might know as TAC. TAC has been a vibrant member of the community here in Raleigh for the past eight years, in Cary for the past eight years, excuse me. They've conducted various aquatics programs and swimming that support the various high schools, both public and private. They support various games that are beneficial to the community, including the senior, the senior games and Special Olympics. And those events generate over $5 million in economic benefits to our county and bring over 400,000 visitors to TAC each year. When we received notice of this rezoning proposal, we, we did our homework and looked through the proposal, and we are excited about the redevelopment of, of the mall. We're so close, a neighbor to the mall. We understand all the points that Mr. Barron made about the redevelopment of the mall. We want to be part of that positive step in going forward in a proposal that makes sense for the mall, that's appropriate for the mall, and we don't want to stand in the way. That said, because of that, that traffic and that use that's generated on the site, we did have some concerns about traffic. We had concerns about access. Although the, the proposal, Topgolf is not on the table, some of those designs would necessarily impact the parking and the access that Triangle Aquatic Center users and visitors from across the state, from across the region, from across the nation experience. And so we've been working with the applicant to resolve some of those issues. The existing parking that we have today is via parking agreement. We've been working with the applicant for four months to try to reach a resolution of how the development can go forward and alleviate some of those parking concerns. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to get to a resolution here tonight, but we are very excited that the applicant is continuing to express a willingness to work together as neighbors and partners going forward, and has expressed a willingness to, to help us work out that parking solution, that access solution, so that TAC can be a meaningful part of this development going forward and can continue to serve the citizens of Cary as that mall redevelops in, in the most appropriate way. Thank you for your time, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, town council members. Mr. Mayor, I'm Karen Mitchener. I live at 1204 Lyerly Lane, and I want to say that I oppose the rezoning change. We live at one of the highest peaks of the neighborhood, and right now, we can clearly see light shining at night from the mall today. Allowing three stories will be more visible from our home, and if we wanted to see large buildings right next door, we would have moved to a larger city such as Raleigh or Durham. We chose Cary because of its suburban setting, the neighborhood parks, the greenways, and the convenience it has to offer if we wanted to be near the city but not a part of a large urban sprawl. Looking at the mission statement for the town of Cary website, I'm somewhat concerned that doing this rezoning seems to be in conflict with serving the citizens of Cary. Case in point. Statement one: Our organization exists to serve our citizens, who will be open, ensure access, encourage involvement, and be accountable to our citizens. Where does this serve us, the citizens who will be most impacted by this rezoning? Who will be accountable when the problems arise? The proposed developer's history shows it's ongoing with many frustrations of abutters and lots of vague impressions of what to expect. Statement three: We will be honest, ethical, and diligent. Our actions will comply with local, state, and federal laws. Right now, the law works for this area, and to be swayed by the dangling of big business shows that our neighborhood will again be the most impacted. We are not in favor of this rezoning. Our homes are our sanctuary, and to take into account that three-story buildings will now look right through our neighborhood will interrupt our quality of life. Increasing the building height will increase the traffic concerns already an issue. We are sandwiched between two major shopping centers. Adding more traffic will only increase our hardship. Statement eight: We value the growth that balances desired service levels, economic benefit, and continued stability for our community. With the mall at a 95% occupancy rate, it seems more like scare tactics. The fact that Cary is an attractive place to live and work, it would seem that the mall would have no problem with the zoning as it stands, thus reflecting continued stability for our community. Statement 10: We are committed to proactive, comprehensive planning to guide the future of our community. We don't want, we do not want to create the beginning of urban sprawl, reflecting the larger cities surrounding us, to stop moving in this direction. Walnut Street is the gateway to Downtown Cary, and rezoning would tip the balance, compromising our way of life for big business and open the door to the development of high-rise encroaching upon our neighborhood. Statement 11: We will preserve and protect our environment. We'll be good stewards of our finite natural resources. The current zoning laws were done precisely for the preservation and protection of all our natural resources and not to make Cary other than what it is. It is a town that strives to preserve and protect its homes, the beautiful parks, the greenways, a community that balances residential life for us to raise our families and in harmony with the business surrounding. We are the gateway as you enter into Cary, and this rezoning change, if passed, reflects adversely with the mission statement for Cary. And having this impression is not what we want. Please protect our community from urban sprawl and not allow this rezoning to occur. In closing, I would like to ask each of the members of the town council a thought. Would you want to have a three-story building looking into your home?
I'm sorry to have to interrupt you. You have to wrap up your time.
Okay. Two more. Would you want to deal with traffic trying to get in and out of your neighborhood as we deal with today?
Okay.
Lastly, are there any words that I hear-
Thank you.
-that you will understand? Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Troy Dempsey. I live on Ivy Lane, right off the eastern side of the proposed, proposed change. I'll be brief. Right now, I am in favor of the, the change in the height limit. I believe that over, over the process of the next hearing that you mentioned, I believe that we all would not approve of, of unreasonable use of that space if it happened. And I believe the three-story height limit will allow more options to be put on the table for, for revitalizing the area. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Teri Hayes, and I represent a number of the Ivy Meadows residents who could not be here tonight. Zoning in its most basic form attempts to separate residential property use from commercial property use. They are intended to preserve the desirable characteristics of all the zones, commercial, industrial, but most important, residential. LDO 4.2.1(c) specifically states that it is intended to protect existing neighborhoods and community character. Most significantly, zoning helps assure property owners and residents that the characteristics of nearby areas will remain stable. The area adjoining Ivy Meadows has been anything but stable. The neighborhood of Ivy Meadows was built in 1972. I don't know if you've ever seen what it looked like back then, but it was a great big green field, absolutely lovely. It was rezoned several times over the next decades, and we conceded each time because we knew that growth was necessary. When Cary Town Center was being built between 1972 and '79, the property owners then were just as concerned as we are now. Many of these same people still live in our neighborhood. They fought back then, got lawyers, and demanded protection. The zoning ordinances when the mall was built were written specifically to protect us, the homeowners and voters, from the mall encroaching on our territory. So much so that JW York, who also built Cameron Village, complained to the Cary News about how many approvals he had to get. He had to get approval 10 times over for certain things because the town council was very involved in this. They clearly understood their role as the representatives of the residents and made sure that our needs superseded those of big business. The berm and its required amount of vegetation were part of zoning requirements put in place to protect us, and so was the height requirement of the buildings on the site. I want to be very clear here. If the property is zoned for three stories, any building that is put on that section of the property can then be three stories tall. And let me repeat it because it's important. The rezone does not merely impact the current building or the client asking for the rezone. It also means anyone who wishes to build on that section of the property in the future could build something three stories tall just inside the buffer zone, barely 250 feet off the back of our property. And how exactly does increasing the height limitation from two stories to three stories create additional benefit to us? The applicant says in their justification that it's a benefit to our neighborhood in comparison to the comprehensive plan's recommendation of up to 10 stories. I will remind you that this particular property was not zoned to allow 10-story buildings. It was specifically restricted from even considering such a height, so that comparison is extremely misleading. So that comparison is extremely misleading and, thank goodness, moot. If we wanted to live in downtown Raleigh, that's where we would have bought the properties. The applicant states that the proposed rezoning will permit the introduction of a significant entertainment use that does not otherwise exist in this area. But a look at their plans makes very clear that all three stories of their proposed building serve the same function. So why exactly can it not be kept to two stories within the zoning requirements that are intended to protect the residents of our neighborhood? The applicant says in their justification that Cary Town has been struggling for several years, and this is true. However, the mall is right now at 95% capacity. And the addition of a third story on a building that is not actually even connected to the mall proper as Dave &amp; Buster's, another entertainment venue is, does not seem as if it will significantly increase the supposed future benefit that the applicant believes will be the result of their venture. And if that venture should fall through, and the zoning is already in place, we are then at the mercy of whoever is building there next to hope they are kind enough to take our needs into consideration when constructing. And honestly, we don't believe that will be the case. We all understand that growth and change are required. However, what you're asking now is too much. This parcel literally sits on our back property lines. We are tired of feeling like more and more of our privacy is being taken away. And we're asking you to please deny this rezoning request for the sake of the homeowners and voters who live in this neighborhood. The Town of Cary and you, the Town Council, who are charged with being our representatives, say you're worried about the quality of life of the residents. But allowing this rezoning to move forward does not protect us, and it does not enhance the quality of our lives, nor does it even offer us something we don't already have. There are seven driving ranges within 10 miles of this spot. This rezoning request, in fact, abuses us. It once more serves to nibble away at and remove the very protections previously granted us by the town. It serves the interests of big business, not the interests of the people who live in this community. Please do not make us believe that the protections offered by previous Town Councils are illusory or false.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Melbourne Bailey. I live at 1205 Lyerly Lane in Cary in Ivy Meadows. So I live three doors from this rezoning proposal. Town Council and--
I'm going to interrupt you there. We're going to stop the clock. This has to do with Topgolf, and that's not--
No, it actually has to do with an example--
It has Topgolf, and we cannot talk about Topgolf. I'm going to pass this back down to the clerk.
This actually is an example of concern about the zoning that you're getting ready to--
Okay. We'll turn back on the clock. We're not talking about golf. We're talking about height. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And this rezoning could potentially lead to a lot of height. That's exactly what my concern is and what some of the neighborhood's concern is. So I'd like to start off speaking to the staff report and the summary observation on page six and specifically number one and two at the top of the page. The proposed rezoning only treats part of the mall site, as indicated in the staff report. That means that once rezoning is changed, the neighborhood could end up with three-story dwellings or taller, right up to the property line, unless existing zoning conditions are maintained. And the zoning is just not two-- existing zoning is not just two feet-- or, I'm sorry, two stories at the mall. But there are a lot of stipulations that go with that. And none of those proposed to be changed. But actually, if you look at the green area in the map, they don't have a 250-foot buffer shown on that map for the rezoning. They actually show the entire-- in the entire property. So also-- so I actually think, and many of my neighbors feel like, that what we should be doing is looking-- doing a comprehensive look at the mall and the use of the property and considering how that mall could be redeveloped, if that's what it needs to be, and so it fits in with the neighborhood. And so that should occur instead of a one part of the mall area and one stipulation related to those conditions. The existing zoning, which is general commercial conditional use, requires a 250-foot building setback from Ivy Meadows. We believe that setback should be all structures, not just occupied buildings. So the reason for the example that I was getting ready to hand you is think about if, for example, they wanted to put in cell phone towers that were 170 feet high. That would be the height of a 17-story building, if my math is understanding. So if you looked at the pages that I gave you, actually, one page apiece, you actually see that there are uses that require those types of structures. And they would-- and that potential, then, would basically put our subdivision in the dark. So both for all of the zoning, both the height and the setbacks in the area, we believe that we should be doing it in feet, not in stories. Because stories can be 20 feet high. They can be 50 feet high. They can be five feet high. To be consistent, we need to have a measurement that we can all agree on and that we know has been kept. In the Cary Lane Use Development Plan, all other office and office and institutional conditions do not allow certain uses, such as outdoor recreation or outdoor music. Conditions should apply to the whole site, not just to a segment of the site. Parking. So this proposed rezoning area takes up a big hunk of the mall. Okay? And potentially, then, depending on the type of development that's being done there, the mall says they're just going to do their building. But the truth is, for all I know, they could be putting in condominiums out there. Once it's rezoned, they can make it anything they want to. If the parking is taken up by structures of some kind that prevent parking there, then that means that our neighborhood is going to suffer the runover of the parking that used to use that corner of the mall. And that is not just used during regional triangle aquatic events. It's used every night. Try to find a parking space in the aquatic center on Tuesday night. Lastly-- well, so-- and so already covered, I guess, an example. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else?
Evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, I'll try to be brief and not repeat what was already said. My name's Matt Taggart. I live on Ivy Lane, right by that dog leg that comes down as part of the parcel. First, I'll refute Jason Barron's assertions that the protest petitions are specific to the use, which will not be named. They're not-- we understand this rezoning process. One of our big objections are to the undefined height limit. How high will the three stories be? The staff report suggests 60-plus feet. What's the upper end of that? My next concern is with the buffer. This is a static buffer with the berm and the fence, but it's also dynamic with the Leland Cypress trees that sit on top of it. These are dying back prematurely due to the support ropes not being removed. The trees are being girdled, and they'll probably die en masse, maybe in the next five years. Who knows when? That's a key component of this buffer. You know, for my house, I can easily see the mall through those trees. If those trees were gone, I would see the street lamps and much more of the mall. So if this passes, I would like to see that part of the buffer addressed, what happens to those trees, the dynamic portion of the buffer. I'm also skeptical of CBL's justification for the rezoning and the proposed benefits to the neighbors. The justification is-- I'm going to paraphrase-- quote, "It would breathe life into the area and be the start of a revitalization of the mall." They suggest that with no evidence. We can just go down the street to crossroads. I don't know the exact zoning, but it's all single-story. And it's incredibly busy. So I don't think there's very good evidence that just adding another story is a panacea to a failing mall. Is it their management? I don't know what it is. But to suggest that this is a panacea to the problem doesn't really fly with me, at least. And benefits to the neighbors, I've never worried about the economics of the mall. I just want them to be a good neighbor to me. You know, I don't want to see a lot of light from it or a lot of noise in the evening when I'm sitting out with my kids. And I think that's going to be inevitable with this additional story, whoever knows how tall it's going to be. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
How y'all doing? I'm not a great speaker. I'm going to get to the bottom of it. When this proposal came up for rezoning--
Can you give us your name, please?
Oh, Paul Costas. And I live at the dead end of Ivy Lane, Champions to the End, which is the last 10 houses, okay? From my understanding, the beginning person talking about the rezoning issues wants to be upfront with all of us. Not a problem. I'm good with that. I've seen Cary grow-- High House was a blacktop. Two lanes, nothing. Y'all did great planning. We need to keep growing. Understand all that. But what I don't like is they're saying they're trying to be upfront with us. Well, it's amazing that from Champions to the Dead End, we never got information about rezoning because they pinpointed owner to people in that area, up there in the green area, that it's going to affect. Well, this affects us, too. And not letting us know about it and then telling you everybody knows about it, it's not fair. Growth is invalid. We need to have all that. Cary Town Center-- okay, I'm not a shopper. I'm a sports guy. I'll go there if I have to. Christmas, birthdays, you know. It's a guy thing. It needs to grow. Y'all did a great work with Preston Corners, when it used to be the old cunt with the farms out there. That's how long I've been here working. All right, I've seen it grow. We can do the same thing on his side of town, but having, you know-- depending on heights of stories-- 30 feet, 40 feet per story, we don't know. So say you go in maximum height of, say, let's say 40 feet per story. Okay? So if they want to go three stories, that's what, 120 feet? Okay? Take Cary's football field widthwise. Stand it up from the end zone, basically to about the 50-yard line, and stick it in your backyard. And what are you going to see? Do you want to go outside and stand on your back porch and say, "Huh, this is what Cary's about? Cary's about quality. I'm a contractor. I've been working all over the areas. I hear, 'Oh, you're from Cary.'" Yeah, I'm proud to be from Cary. All right? We have limitations of what we can and can't do. You've controlled it. We need to do that. But we can't stick something in here that's just going to benefit the mall. It's got to benefit everybody. So having this to go three stories, you need to have maximum height. Okay? Three stories might work. It just depends how high we're going to go. But if it's going to go above the buffer height, where the trees are and everything else, it's not going to work. It's just not. You need to walk back there, if you haven't, by the aquatic center. Because we walk up to the pool. I swim. I go there and work out. I can walk to their sidewalks. I'm looking at it at the street height. So basically, me and you are right here. Okay? Now, you want-- I would say this is probably 23 to 24 feet tall. Go up four times more. Do you want that in your backyard? We don't. Buffers are going to matter. Height is going to matter. And where you're going to put this is going to matter. The mall needs to get better. It needs to grow, but they got to-- you guys got to do it right. And that's all we're asking. Okay? Take that into consideration before we get something that's really, you know, sports structure. We got a lot. We don't need that big thing in the middle of the mall. It's just going to be something that's going to end in Cary. You've taken care of Cary well. We don't want people to say, "Oh, why'd they do that?" Control it. It's all we want. Take consideration for what we have. I've been on that street since 1988. All right? I've seen it grow. Went through the mall, went through the swim club. You guys listened to us. We didn't do section departments back there. We didn't do this. You didn't have the thoroughfares. People walk up and down those streets. People talk. We wave six-thirty in the morning. We actually-- we all know each other. So we're all a group. And this wouldn't be the end of it if you passed this. Okay? It's going to get tough. But we're all in for the battle. Just take into consideration if this was your backyard and what you would be looking at. And that's all we're asking for. If you can do that and listen to us, then we did our job. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Your Honor and Council members. I really don't have anything to say because the ones went before me said it eloquently. The one thing I would like to say is my name is Heta Bagnell Jennings, and my property backs up directly to Sears. It runs parallel to the Convention Drive Loop and the Sears parking lot. I have lived there 42 years, seen it go from the field to the current state and now the rezoning. I do not want a three-story building with a lot of lights blaring in my bedrooms. Okay? And I'm a ranch, and my neighbors are two stories. So they're going to be affected more than me. There's a lot of other things I want to talk about, but I'm not allowed to tonight. So I would just prefer that a different solution to providing an attractive tenant in the Sears building be pursued. And I believe that the current size of the mall is the best solution to protecting our neighborhood. You are our servants, and I appreciate what you do for our community. And especially Tac, too. I do know a lot about Tac because I have worked at Tac since it opened. I teach water aerobics over there. I know that it is a nonprofit organization that provides a great service to this community. I do not want to see it jeopardized. So for the protection of my privacy and my backyard and an existing established facility, I would respectfully request you to vote down this zoning petition, or we're going to get to know each other real well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. My name is Charles Mitchener. I live on Lyerly Lane, and I oppose this rezoning proposal. First, I'd like to take a moment to refute CBL and their assertion that the mall is being kept up. Just this last week, I took a walk around the buffer zone as it goes around the part of Convention Drive that butts up to Lyerly Lane and that buffer with the fence. Not only did I see broken fence pieces, but a whole section of the fence just cut to the side, looking straight into somebody's backyard. If that's keeping it up, you know, I'd have to disagree. And as I got further down towards where the Wells Fargo was at the edge of the mall, the corner there, there was a whole bunch of trash all strewn out along there like-- I don't know if there was a busted dumpster. It just looked like somebody's trash had exploded out into that little wooded area where the edge of the fence ended. And the rest of the mall began headed off towards Walnut. This request was going forward for a rezoning before Sears even moved out. I see this as the-- really, the-- maybe the-- I don't know for sure. But this could be the very first business that is, you know, asked to be in here. You know, there's plenty of other places for three-story buildings in Cary or Morristown or Raleigh. I'm sure they got plenty of room, plenty of space. They're talking about shoehorning this large facility into an area where it will almost fit. And it's not a good fit for our neighborhood. If you look at this map, everything to the-- what is that? East of the mall is all residential. And there's a lot of people up there. I know all the people that I've talked to, except for one elderly gentleman, said that he's given up. He lives right along the Ivy Lane section that butts up to this property. And over the years, I guess he's been there for quite some time, as a lot of the residents have. And he's just-- he's tired. He's tired of fighting, you know? I hope I never get to that place. You know, I'm going to do my best to prove to you that I don't think this is a good idea. It's not a good fit for our neighborhood. I'm a skygazer. You know, if you drive up over Lyerly Lane on a clear night, that's me in the front yard with a tripod and a camera and maybe a telescope, you know, depending on the night, if it's clear, you know? And it's already challenging trying to see what I like to see, you know, from my front yard because of the mall. But the mall was there when I moved in. You know, increasing the light, not happy about that idea, as you can imagine. Well, I guess that's everything I-- Well, I guess that's everything I wrote down. Thanks for your time. Just in case I wasn't clear, I oppose this rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, I have a whole list of comments and questions that I want to get through. First of all, I want to thank all of the speakers. I know it's difficult when something's been in the paper, it's been talked about, and you come here to speak about it and then you're told you can't speak about it. So I know that's got to be very difficult and I appreciate you doing this. It does have legal implications, as our town attorney gets explaining. So thank you for doing that. Also want to make sure everyone understands that it is our duty to hear every proposal. And so therefore, it goes through a process. That doesn't mean we champion it. We could vote for it. We could vote against it. I got the feeling that some people thought we were all for this. We're not, we're indifferent at this point. At least I am and I think all my colleagues are. I've known them enough to think that they keep an open mind about everything, but they never side until all the information comes in. And I think that's very important to understand. And as far as the process goes, so the developer has to get five out of six votes as it stands right now with a valid protest petition. And that's a very difficult task to do. He's offered to meet with you. I think it'd be in everyone's best interest if you do meet with him and if you don't come any closer together, that's fine, but that helps us with our decision. If you can say, we met with the guy three times and we got nowhere, that helps us. If anything changes between this public hearing and the time it goes to the Planning and Zoning Board, there'll be a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Board, and that's important for you to understand as well. After the Planning and Zoning Board reviews it, then it'll come back to council for a decision. Okay. Having said all that stuff about the process, there was a lot, this is about height, and I'm very interested and I would love to see a balloon test, and I don't know if we can require it or ask it, but along all the sections of Ivy Lane, I would love to see balloons floated from the mall, what the height would look like, and then pictures from Ivy Lane to see how high this thing really is, if that's possible. Is that possible, Ms. Bearman?
Are you asking that of the...
That's what I want to know. Can I ask that of the applicant? I don't know where the applicant went. Or...
I've never had that question before, but we can look into that. I don't.
Because that's a...
We've done it before.
Yeah.
We've done it.
We've done it.
Ms...
It's been a while, but we've done it before.
Okay. I didn't know that.
So I'll let the applicant speak to that, if he's willing to do that. Mr. Barron.
I wasn't sure if that was an invitation or not, but it's never stopped me before. I believe we would be happy to demonstrate via a balloon test, and I'll confirm with my client, but I don't think that would be a big problem to demonstrate what three stories looks like for this facility, because I do think there might be some confusion about what three stories actually is as it relates to our intended redevelopment.
And if I could ask, and it's totally voluntary on your end, but if you could put one on each end of where the rezoning is taking place and then get pictures from Ivy Lane, that would really help me a lot.
Okay, we'll do our best to provide accurate information.
While we're talking about the heights, three stories seems to be a vague term that has a lot of consternation around it. Is it possible that you all could maybe specify in your rezoning request a height limit?
Without question.
Okay.
Without question. I mean, and we chose stories because that is what was used the last time around. We have no problem providing clarity about what the maximum height is. It's certainly not 100 feet tall.
And another question for later, not for you. TAC is a big piece next to this. If the TAC protest goes away, do you still have a valid protest petition? If everything else but TAC goes away, do you still have a valid protest petition? That's information I want later. I know you can't give me that now, but I'd be interested in knowing that as well. And my last thing, there was a comment made that if this rezoning takes place, they could put in condominiums, and my understanding is that it is absolutely false. It has to be general commercial.
Right. That would not be an allowable use in general commercial.
Okay. Just to make sure. And I think that's my entire list.
I have a list too.
Okay.
So mostly for verification or validation of the information that was provided, there was a gentleman, I think it was Mr. Costa, I hope I got your name right.
Costin.
Costin, thank you, who was concerned with notification. Could you bring up the notification map again? Thank you for that.
These are the, these are the properties that were included in the town's notification that are located within 800 feet of the site.
And I don't know if that gentleman sees his house within the yellow, but that is the, hopefully you saw that.
We're down at the Dead End and it stopped at Champions because they, it was basically said that the specific area that was going to be zoned, and we were out of it.
Okay. So, sorry, I just wanted to describe, Ms. Bearman, do you want to describe the process with respect to notification for the folks in the audience so that they understand the legal ramifications of that?
The notification requirement for any rezoning request that moves forward, we will send mailed notices to all of the properties within 800 feet of the site. That's well in excess of what legislation requires that we notify, but Cary has made the choice to go out to a distance of 800 feet.
And what is required, 100?
I believe the actual requirement is adjacent.
Oh, okay.
But we do, and if any portion of the property is within 800 feet, even if it's a small corner that barely touches it, we will notify that parcel. The property is also posted. I think in this case, there were signs on four, four different streets with, for the notification that were, the signs were up for a couple of weeks, and then we also have notification on the town's website.
Great. And my only other question from a verification perspective, there seems to be a lot of consternation with the adjoining property owners about the maintenance of the berm, which obviously has come up. Who is and owns that? Is that CBL? Is that a, I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to that, but it, obviously the maintenance of the berm has come up as an issue and should this move forward, that would be another, obviously, very important consideration that if they're not seeing it maintained today, obviously, they would have even less trust in it moving forward. So just bringing that up to the applicant so that he's aware of it. I'm sure he already is, but just going to piggyback on that.
Sure. You know, when you're looking at that green area, could you go back to the screen with the green area? I think if I were an adjacent homeowner, I would be very concerned that that green area goes into the buffer. And my recommendation is that it be considered by the applicant that you pull that green area out of the buffer.
And there may be, this was, the main thing we were trying to show with this was the boundary for where the thousand square feet went with, or the thousand-foot distance went, trying to make that clear. There are some additional constraints regarding, you know, setbacks and those limitations. So as this moves forward, we can take, we can take that and narrow that down to exclude the areas where buildings would not be allowed.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, we can do that.
Give us a real understanding of how close this three-story building could come to the homes. That would be great.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Shearhardt.
I guess firstly, I'm very glad we don't have to vote on this tonight. I think there were really good points made on both sides. I think Mr. Barron made some excellent points, reading from our Imagine, our own Imagine Cary document. And of course, the neighbors made some, some wonderful points. The mall needs work. There's no question about it. If three stories in a section of the mall can help that a great deal, three stories doesn't seem to be terribly excessive over two compared to what it could possibly be. But the concerns of our citizens, to me, trump that. I think the mall needs to be a good neighbor. I think we need to be concerned about our neighbors and concerned about, concerned about their concerns. So I'm going to struggle with, with this one. I strongly support the height parameter put into the, into the rezoning. I think back to Specialty Grocery Store. What did that mean? You know, so stories, what does that really mean? I think we need either a clearer definition of stories or a height parameter put in there. And I also echo what you said there, Mayor, that we hope the citizens and the applicant can meet. And I presume at those meetings, they'll be allowed to talk about the unmentionable use of this, as opposed to the fact they couldn't do it tonight. And I think that might be really helpful if they could talk about that before it comes back. But this goes through P and Z, and I think it's, we're going to learn a lot as the process goes along.
Ms. France?
You want to go, Jack?
Red banner. I can wrap it up.
Mr. Smith?
No, I've got some comments.
All right. Ms. France?
All right. I'll go. I too would like to thank everybody that came out tonight to speak. I really appreciate your input. It helps us in our decision-making process. But there was a statement or a question made that I would like to address, and I think it went something like, would I like, or would any of the council members like to have a three-story building looking into their home? I live behind Cary High School, and the new additions that was installed there that I believe is three stories tall. I can show you a picture looking off my back deck if you'd like to see it. So while my colleagues might not have the experience of seeing a tall building out their window or out their deck, I do. So I can appreciate a lot of your concerns. I really can. I can also tell you it's not as bad as I thought it was going to be. I actually have more concerns with the high school kids using my front street like a drag strip every day at about 2:30. They seem to drive slower in the morning. I don't know if they're not awake yet or what, but at the end of the day, what we're talking about here is three stories. I legitimately understand the concerns regarding Triangle Aquatic Center and their parking. I get that. They are an incredible asset to our community, and I don't want us to do anything that's going to hurt that. But at the same time, I remember back when they asked the town to help them fund a dive well that would hold a 10-meter platform. So that would be a pretty tall building too. So I'm kind of surprised they have an issue with the height or the rezoning. And I think more of those concerns, I guess, would be better at site plan and during the quasi-judicial hearing where that's when the rubber meets the road and that's where the details are. You know, you always hear devils in the details and things like parking and lighting and setbacks and exactly how tall is three, some of those things. That gets worked out in site plan. At the end of the day, are we saying, do we think a three-story tall building anywhere in this green area could be acceptable? At least, that's how I understand it. I know a lot of us over the years have talked about the revitalization of Cary Town Center and, you know, we've all seen it slow decline over the years. We've, we've lost Sears. We've lost another, other big-name tenants over the year that have kind of been filled with, they've been filled with tenants, but maybe not those same types of tenants that used to draw people like it did. But, you know, I'm concerned we're going to continue to lose more. And I think in all of our looking at other communities, you know, we saw some great examples in Charlotte where, you know, the malls had died and become blighted and, you know, it just, I don't, we don't want that here. But we've always talked about, you know, what this could be, giving its proximity to 40 and Cary Town Boulevard and everything else, and it's a, it's one of the gateways into our downtown and stuff, you know? And could this be a new North Hills? Maybe not with 10-story tall buildings, but, you know, something along those lines. And I think it really has the potential to do that. So to me, I'm going to be totally honest with you, the three stories is not really an issue to me. The three stories might become an issue when I see where that's going, where I see where those buildings or building might get placed. How far back is it from the residents to the east? How big of a buffer are they providing the residents to the east? You know, what are they going to be doing to address lighting, parking, and other concerns? Then it, that might be an issue. But at the end of the day, for me, the question is, do I think a three-story tall could be acceptable here? Yeah, I think so. But again, devil's in the details, so. And also, I don't, I hate that some people are, I'm sad that some people are looking at it, you know, citizens versus big business. This council, or at least I try to represent all of our citizens, both our residents and our corporate citizens, you know? And I think each of those have a voice at the table. And I'm going to listen to all of those voices and at the end of the day, make my decision. So I too would encourage all of you to work with the applicant, meet with the applicant, see what you can get as far as concessions, conditions, you know, buffers and those kinds of things to try to protect your quality of life. But, well, I guess those are my comments.
Other comments?
I appreciate all your, your statements. Obviously, it's my district and I have a lot of history with this one also. But as an aside, before I make that comment, those of you that rely heavily on that protest petition may, may think about writing your state legislators, we're getting rid of that option. And read the quotes that have been in the paper recently and the arrogance of the comments that really dismiss your voice as a citizen. It's really, it's really pretty obnoxious. So apologize for that digression, but it was, I'm going to take this a little more personal because somebody mentioned the conditions from March of 1990. Those started in 89 when the mall was, was in, naturally, I've got, excuse me, I have an alarm going off, medical alarm, apologize. Back in the early 1990, when the mall was expanding, I was invited to Ivy Lane. And we met on the deck of a neighbor. If that neighbor was here tonight, I didn't recognize you. I saw a lot of young faces I'm not sure were born back then, and I'm kind of excited to see a lot of new faces. But we sat there, we sat there with virtually the entire street, and those, that information is in my attic. I'm not sure where, but I can find it if I have to. And we talked about what was going on, and we talked about the development being a good neighbor. And as a result of that, the volunteering of the berm is how that came into existence. And not only did, at that time, the developer be responsive to the berm, but agreed to the Leland Cypress on top. And that was like kind of unheard of because we had to get all these tree people in, arborists in, to figure out, would they really work up there? Now, the irony of it is that Leland Cypress, on average, lasts about 25 years, because I planted them in my yard and it's been over 25 years and they're now all dead. They get too big and they kill each other. So I also walked that the other day and saw that same fence in disrepair. That berm is starting to really get seedy. And it's going to be, as you said, Lori, that's going to be something I want to see addressed if anything moves forward. And I suggest, I would suggest that something be done about some replanting and revitalization at the top of that berm, but also the repair of the fence and all of the other things. But my point is, we met back then, we had those discussions with the developer, and we came to that agreement that they stepped up to and built that. We also had the discussions back then about the two-story. But it was really, I don't think it was so much the two stories as much as it was the view of it being too inconsistent a use coming together and that there was no ability to have a softer transition. So the, the goal at that time was to find a way to make those, those two uses more compatible. And that's how you kind of got the great, the great berm that you have, and then the plantings on top of that. So I encourage the, the developer going forward, working with the mall, to really think about those original intentions and to make sure that those are addressed. The same thing, I don't really have a strong concern at this point about three stories. What I did hear from one of the individuals is the wish that this entire development, since it's so critical to us, be looked at in a more comprehensive way. You know, I don't know if we have that ability to do that, unfortunately, the way these pieces come in, but I can tell you from my perspective, I'm going But I can tell you from my perspective, I'm going to be looking at how this component of the rezoning could possibly fit with some future ideas for that mall. Because that mall's going to go away as we know it. You're kidding yourself if you don't think it is. You know, as you said, Don, you know, the traditional days of old big boxes are going, they're all failing. And it's just, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. You know, how long do the J.C. Penney's, how long do the Macy's, how long do the others and, you know, survive where they can carry the command for people to come into that mall and keep it vital? Not going to happen. This area's got to grow. Personally, we need the three stories on the left end, you know, where you have a major intersection, and we've got a couple of out parcels that are failing. And what we're doing is we're looking at other out parcels, which over time will probably fail, too. That's where we need the three-story. That's where you need townhomes, because they will then give energy to the mall. They'll make it a walkable community, and it'll still buffer and protect the Ivy Lane and the areas behind there. So I don't know what we can do about that, but I'll tell you, on my wish list, I'm going to be looking at how this component of the rezoning could be better used as we look at that whole area. Sorry, it's a medical.
You're about to explode.
Yeah. Ignore the piercing sound. It'll go away. Sorry. I don't mean to be lighthearted about a situation I know is very serious for all of you, especially on Ivy Lane. There's a couple people I think I recognized. I'm not sure. All I know is I'm excited to see new faces. The concern back in the early, in 1990 was the area going rental. I think we stayed that off. I think we see a lot of revitalization with young families. And I heard from some of the younger ones that are looking forward to seeing something different at that mall. So whatever I can do to help you and advise you, I can't talk to you about any applications that are going to go on that. That's against the law. But on the rezoning, anything I can do to facilitate that to Ivy Lane as we did before. And one of the other conditions, by the way, is when they were developing, they got their houses power washed virtually every, every other week. That was a condition that showed good neighbors during that grading and that construction.
We call that the good old days.
Yeah, we call that the good old days. I'm sorry. But I still think, in the end, we had a success story. We had the neighborhood virtually united. You've heard from one or two that probably were not agreeing back then also. But we had a situation where the mall came in, expanded, and did not impact the lives or the quality of the lives of the people there. So I'm hoping that it'll move forward, that, that the applicant takes to heart some of the concerns you heard from my peers. They're much more eloquent at these things. And I really like the idea that we have firm data on the height, and also that there's a clear understanding to the people out there about setbacks. So the higher you go, farther the setbacks have to be. So you're not going to end up with three stories right at the berm looking in. But the quote that came out about being on the second story and the other house being at ranch, that was a quote that night at the table when we were drinking our lemonade and iced tea. I drank the lemonade, they drank the sweet tea. I don't drink the sweet tea, so. So that's it. You've all said it, but there's a lot of work that has to be done for this thing as it goes through. And I hope it happens, some of it happens before the P and Z meeting.
Other comments or questions?
Okay. Like I said earlier, just a reminder, this is going to the Planning and Zoning Board. If there are any changes between now and then, there will be another public hearing. And do we, and that will determine when it goes to the Planning and Zoning Board. If there are changes, it'll be later.
That's correct.
The Planning and Zoning Board. If there are no changes, it'll go sooner to the Planning and Zoning Board. So stay tuned. And if you can't keep up with that, drop us an email. We'll let you know. We'll get you the information you need.
Just go stick off.
That's right. So thank you all for being here. And before we move on to our next public hearing, the council's going to take a quick five-minute break.
Goodbye.
We'll reconvene our council meeting and move to our next public hearing. It's our final public hearing. 5.6 on the agenda. Land Development Ordinance text amendments. We're going to hear from staff, conduct a public hearing. Will not take action on this tonight. Instead, we're going to refer to our Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Beerman?
This is a public hearing for the round 31 amendments to the Land Development Ordinance. It just shows a tentative schedule. Following the public hearing tonight, this would be forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board, and then would come back to you for a decision no sooner than June 25th. This round includes five different items. In your staff report, there's background information and the specific text for each of these, and I'll go through, I'll summarize each of them for you. The first item relates to street connectivity. This item came about through input that we received from town council and citizens with a desire for greater flexibility when considering connections to existing neighborhood. We heard some comments on this at tonight's public speaks out. This amendment, as it's crafted, reflects some conceptual approach that was discussed at a council work session on December 9th. Some of the key points that we heard at that time was a general support for a tiered neighborhood system in making some of these decisions. Wanted to make sure we addressed neighborhoods that were approved prior to the current connectivity requirements, which were adopted in 1999. Also wanted some flexibility to allow for some council discretion and a specific comment that we, that you didn't want any gates where access would be provided for emergency use Just a brief overview of the current requirements. Street connections or stubs to adjacent properties are generally required in all cases. The planning director may waive connection if such a connection isn't feasible due to some physical constraints such as topography. And the council can waive connections after conducting a quasi-judicial hearing. Required connections are addressed during subdivision or site plan review, not at the time of rezoning currently, and this was one of the issues that was of concern as well. This is a summary showing the approach that's recommended and reflected in the ordinance draft that you see. Basically, this would classify adjacent neighborhoods, and that would be neighborhoods that are adjacent to property that's being considered for development. Classify those neighborhoods in either a one, two, or three tier, as a one, two, or three-tier neighborhood. A tier-one neighborhood would be any neighborhood not classified as two or three, and in that case, the connectivity requirements would be the same as currently required. A tier-two or three neighborhood would be one that was approved with the development plan prior to January 14th of 1999, where there was no existing street stub to the property line in that adjoining neighborhood. The distinctions between the tier-two and tier-three neighborhood would be made where if there was no apparent present or future public safety concern, the neighborhood could be classified as tier-two. If there was a potential present or future public safety concern, that could be from the fire department, for example, then, then that could be, would be classified as tier-three. For all three tiers, pedestrian, bicycle, and utility connections would be required between the neighborhoods. A full road stub to the property line would only be required in a tier-one, adjacent to a tier-one neighborhood. Adjacent to tier-two, no road connection would be required or to stub to the property. And for a tier-three neighborhood, and that would be the one where we could, could see potential safety issues, the road connection could be required, but only for emergency In those tier-three neighborhoods, there are several design alternatives that could be considered for the emergency access connection. This could include paved street connections with removable obstructions to prevent access during non-emergency times. Could be a raised curb, turf stone with grass, or other methods that were approved by the Director of Transportation and Facilities and the Fire Chief. Also, adjacent to a tier-two or tier-three neighborhood, an applicant, if this is adopted, could offer a zoning condition at the time of the rezoning to commit to not including a road connection when the site and subdivision plan is reviewed. And this is an option that is not available now. And also, adjacent to a tier-three neighborhood, where, where an emergency access connection could be required, the applicant could also include zoning conditions to commit to a particular type of connection that would need to be described both in a zoning condition and also on a concept plan, so that that could be reviewed at some level by staff. The next item, let's see, make sure. Okay. The next item is related to buffer and tree protection enforcement. This is another issue that was discussed at your council work session on December 9th of last year. One of the things that is important with this item is it sends a message to the community emphasizing the importance of tree protection, maintaining existing vegetation, landscape areas on all developed sites, as well as any sites that are undergoing development, and emphasizing the importance of that to the town. It increases the consequences for unauthorized removal of disturbance of vegetation. This is done through higher fines and more effective revegetation requirements. We tried to make some changes to result in more effective restoration of landscape areas or buffers that have been damaged or removed. And it would apply to all landscape areas that are shown on approved plans or on existing, or existing on developed sites, so that even with some of the older subdivisions where it may, you know, indicate a landscape area, a buffer area, we would be able to main- a buffer area, we would be able to main, ensure that those are maintained and replanted if they're removed. Like to go over some of the changes to the fines that, that are proposed regarding entering tree protection areas. The current fine for that is $1,000. We're proposing to double that to $2,000. Currently, there's a fine of $2 to $4 per square foot of disturbed area. We would propose to just use the maximum of that, where, take out the discretion for making the decision within that range and just go to $4 per square foot. There's also increased fines related to severe pruning, particularly in the context of the first violation. Currently, fines don't kick in for severe pruning until the second violation, so this would begin with a lesser fine for an initial violation and then continue on as those violations increase. One important aspect that you did mention at the work session is for these fines to not apply to buffers that are located on single-family lots. revegetation requirements would apply, but not the buffer, but not the fines, and these would be typically with older lots where, prior to the time where all of our buffers were required to be outside of individual lots. There were some changes we made to replacement vegetation. We wanted to look for ways to enhance the opacity of replanted buffers and, and looking at some of the standards we have with that. One, in, one change is to increase the number of replacement evergreen trees from 2 to 6 per 2,000 square feet of disturbed area, and then include a specific requirement where if you're, if the performance standard is to create opacity, then it would specifically require that the trees be planted in double staggered rows and it be of a species that's opaque from the ground up. And in looking at the, we did some, some calculations and sketches based on an appropriate spacing of trees to ensure that they would, would grow healthy and have, have enough separation and felt like the requirement of going up to 6 per 2,000 square feet could accomplish that. We also made some changes to increase the, a slight increase to the size of replacement ornamental trees so that it matched with the size required for initial planting, and also established a maximum size of 4 and 1/2 caliber inches for trees at installation with the thought that if the trees get too large, then there's increased chance of mortality for those. We wanted to, to focus on trying to, to have standards that would really facilitate long-term growth and health of the buffers. Another thing that's, is different with the ordinance proposed is the, the requirements for the number and size of replacement trees were established as a base requirement because there's so many different circumstances you need to assign, you know, everything from how far apart the existing trees are, how large are the trees that are being, how large the trees were that were removed, and how many caliber inches would really be needed to replace those. We wanted to have some flexibility to look at these individual situations and give the staff the ability to either increase or decrease this base requirement, taking all of these site-specific factors into complaint, into account, so that what we would be trying to achieve is the long-term plant growth and viability to get to the maximum intent, maximum intent of that buffer area. In cases where the base requirement may be decreased in terms of the amount of vegetation planted, then fines would be assessed in lieu of any of that vegetation that could, basically couldn't fit on the site in a healthy manner. And this could come about, for example, if area was, was disturbed and there were a lot of large trees that were removed, and it may not be feasible to plant enough caliber inches of trees to really replace that because of the, because of the size, and we would at least work with getting as much on the property as was feasible and then have fines for the remainder. There are a couple of other provisions. We wanted to clarify that these, that the unauthorized disturbance penalties, revegetation applied to all previously approved development plans. We clarified the definition of disturbed area and also made some changes to the appeal process. All of the appeals would be for either fine or the amount of, fines or the amount of replacement vegetation would be to the Board of Adjustment. Currently, fines are appealed to the town manager and replacement vegetation is appealed to the town council, so we were, wanted to send all of that to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. There are a few other related changes that we made that were applicable to new development, not, not for replacement when there's a violation, but for just new development starting out. We clarified the intent of the type A, B, and C buffers and made some, some changes with the requirements for those to base the number of required trees on the length of the buffer rather than just the maximum spacing between trees. And also added the flexibility that we, that I mentioned earlier for the planning director to modify the initial planting requirements based on site-specific conditions if that seemed something that was desirable to, to better achieve the performance standard. And finally, in order to absorb these changes and try to have it be more clear and understandable both to staff and citizens, we reorganized the entirety of section 7.2.13 and chapter 11 so that these changes would read, would read more clearly, so some of the text has shifted between those sections. One other point I wanted to point out with the, the previous item as well. I'm sorry, that's all. The next item, dimensional standards for low-density residential development. Again, this was an item that was discussed at the town council work session, and this was really initiated in response to concerns expressed by council and citizens regarding the character of many of the residential subdivisions that have been created in areas targeted for low-density residential development. And many of the, and where the plan designation is LDR, we've heard a number of comments that the developments that are created don't meet the expectations for low-density development in looking at the relationship between the density that's anticipated and the actual lot size and setbacks and other dimensional requirements as that development occurs. This was discussed at the council work session on December 9th, again of last year, and so we brought forward some amendments that we felt spoke to the direction that we heard with some of the comments to, to bring forward for consideration and discussion. So, in looking at all of the comments that we heard from council, we were proposing to approach this issue basically in two stages. The first stage is, includes the amendments that are presented tonight and would basically do two things. One, clarify intent statements for the residential districts to, to provide more of a link between the intent of the zoning districts and the land use plan. And also establish dimensional standards specific to detached dwellings where the land use plan designation is low or very low-density residential. In essence, this amendment, where the land use plan designation is LDR, would apply the current standards that we use for R12 in both the R8 and the TR districts, and this is all accomplished with some additional rows in the dimensional use, the standards table. And then likewise, where the plan designation is for very low residential density, we would specify that within those areas detached dwellings would be subject to dimensional standards that in essence are similar to the R12, but with a larger minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet and a corresponding larger minimum lot width, so that regardless of the district that those uses were in, the dimensional standards would have a consistency within the areas that were set out for low or very low-density development. We know that there were, this isn't the complete, complete picture. There was also discussion at the work session related to medium-density residential and the fact that it's a very broad range of densities. We don't have very many zoning districts, so we have particularly the TR district that has to serve a lot of purposes and is really, has to cover a lot of areas and different, different types of circumstances. It's usually, you know, addressed through zoning conditions. So we would propose to have a second stage for this step to further address those concerns. First, through incorporating policy direction as we go through the imaginary process, and then in that final document to clearly express the intended relationship between density and dimensional standards. And then after adoption of a new comprehensive plan, undertake a more comprehensive review of the Land Development Ordinance. It's been in place since 2003. We're up to amendment 31 now, and each amendment has had a number of parts in it. So it may be appropriate at that time to take a bigger look at the ordinance, all the zoning districts, perhaps replace the entire LDO, and to have a good correlation between the newly adopted plan and the Land Development Ordinance. But we think in, if there's a more immediate concern for new projects coming through the rezoning process and the density and lot size relationship, then this is a way that a large part of those concerns could start to be addressed in a shorter timeframe. I would point out that these changes would apply only to property that was zoned or rezoned to one of these districts after the effective date, so anything that's in, in process or subdivisions that, you know, have been started or property that has been rezoned on, relying on other assumptions would continue on. The next item, this was initiated by council in response to the operation of a new auto restoration business that is in the town center and operating where there had been previous non-conforming auto repair business, and that business had ceased operation. The, we got direction from council to consider allowing motor vehicle resident, restoration in limited circumstances in portions of the town center where new vehicle repair uses are currently not allowed. As a little background on this item, the town center area plan was adopted in 2002. The town center zoning and the sub-districts that go along with that were established with adoption of the LDO in 2003 to implement the various areas with, plan designation areas within the town center area plan. At that, at that time, the LDO included, there was, I think, a lot of discussion about this at the time, to include use-specific standards for several auto-related uses, including vehicle repair. And the way that the current ordinance was set up with that, it allowed new vehicle repair businesses in the commercial, office institutional, commercial low-end density, low-intensity and office industrial sub-districts of the town center. So those new repair areas could be allowed in those districts. Within the HMXD and the MXD sub-districts, the existing businesses could be maintained as non-conforming, very similar to legal non-conforming uses, with a limited ability for expansion, but then specifying that they couldn't be reestablished if discontinued for 180 days, as is the case basically with all non-conforming uses. This map shows what we're, I hope that we caught all of them, there may be some, but we tried to capture the existing automotive-related uses within the town center. The yellow didn't show up quite as well as I like, but if you see the, the yellow dots, those, those are businesses that are within the HMXD and the MXD sub-districts that can continue on with their current operation, but within those areas, new businesses would not be allowed. The circles that you see in green are within the sub-districts where new uses could be In addressing this, we have a couple of options for consideration. The first option is based on the, what we heard from council at the meeting where this was discussed and where we're directed to pursue this. We proposed a definition for motor vehicle restoration that basically ties it to the definition for antique motor vehicles by the division of, by the NC DMV, and those are ones that are at least 35 years old. And we would propose to allow those in the town, in, in the town center sub-districts where vehicle repair is allowed, subject to use-specific standards. The use-specific standards would be applicable only in the MXD and the HMXD sub-districts as the use similar to auto repair would, would be allowed as is in the other districts. The use-specific standards we proposed with that would be the, consistent with the DMV definition I mentioned, the vehicles would be at least 35 years old. The building was, would have been legally used for a vehicle repair use at some point in the past, has been vacant for at least 24 months, and the owner can document attempts to convert the property to a different use that's allowed in the building or on the property. And then some limitations on outdoor storage area to provide a limit of five vehicles, maximum of 25% of the lot area for outdoor storage located behind the building, and screening by solid fence or masonry wall. The last two bullet points that you see there are currently required with this change, trying to keep the scope narrow. We did add a component to, to keep the number of vehicles low. And also, in these areas, it would be allowed only as a special use, and that special use would automatically terminate 180 days after succession of the use, so that the special use permit would not continue on indefinitely if the use was discontinued. We think there are some notable pros and cons related to this approach. From the pro standpoint, it may address the, an existing business operating on Old Apex Road that I, that was the impetus for trying to look at this situation, and it would generally provide an additional option for reuse of, of existing buildings that had been used for vehicle repair in the past if their non-conforming status is lost. There could be cases where if it was difficult to reuse a building after a certain period of time, having some reuse of the building would be better than having it be vacant. From the, on the other side, we have some concerns that this would limit development for uses that are more consistent with the vision for downtown by taking, taking some of that area and perhaps a slower renewal of some areas. The other concern that we had with the restoration is that there's some significant enforcement challenges. Basically, the distinction between auto restoration and vehicle repair, any other type of vehicle repair is more repair is more operational, and that's going to be something that will be very, very challenging for staff to try to enforce. Staff did prepare a second option, and this addresses the enforcement issue only, and that would be to make no distinction between vehicle repair or restoration. So that would not include any new definition of use category. And I would point out too, we did, in coming up with these definitions, tried to find some examples from other jurisdictions where this kind of distinction was made, and I was not able to find any, any other examples to, to go on from that. And also where the, where the use is discontinued, the, the same standards would be recommended as we, as I just went over in the first option with the exception of the 35-year age of the vehicles being repaired. Item E, our final item, includes technical procedural and minor amendments. There are a number of different changes in here. We would clarify time limits for certain actions, would establish a minimum lot size for keeping roosters in the R-40 and R-80 districts, and this was something that was brought to us via citizen. Would clarify step-back requirements for collector streets, correct some section references and minor items, clarify some buffer requirements, requirements for utilities and acceptance of infrastructure. That concludes staff comments. Following the public hearing will be available for questions.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing for the Land Development Ordinance text amendments, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
My name's Mel Tucker, Fordland Drive, 5929. You heard from my neighbors very recently, earlier tonight, about the Pritchett Farm project. Our continuing objections to the connectivity portion of your LDO is still ongoing. Your planning staff rejected MI Homes' plan that we agreed with after we followed your directions to work with them. You, your staff directed MI Homes to submit another plan with a stub for future connection to Fordland Drive. My attorney has proposed a reasonable compromise, what I consider to be reasonable anyhow, to your staff. Three things: he proposed that you eliminate the stub, from my opinion, because a stub is nothing more than a staging area for criminals; two, that you keep the 30-foot placebo buffer in place; and three, that you maintain ownership of the right-of-way so that you can do your connectivity if you see the need for it in the future. We're now waiting for word from you as to your response to our request for a compromise. Now, I understand that the MI Homes project is a project that will be decided under the current LDO, not the one we're talking about here, the proposed. And I do understand that you are not requiring connection between Fordland Drive and the Pritchett Farm project at this time. So why am I here? It's very simple. When I learned that you were holding a public hearing on proposed amendments to the LDO because you wanted greater flexibility when it comes to the issue of connectivity, I thought, what better way to address this, the proposed changes, than using the Pritchett Farm project maybe as a case study on what you could do differently? So I read the proposed changes, and believe it or not, I'd like to be of help to you in getting a good connectivity policy in place. The proposed changes, let me start off by saying to you that I do not believe under any circumstances that there is a right way to do the wrong thing. The way I read the proposed amendments to your LDO, your planning staff is trying to give you exactly that, something for you to hang your hat on that sounds reasonable while making you make a wrong decision. The proposed amendments establishes for, I'm going to stick with the connectivity part, the three-tier assignment for properties. Based upon the tier designation, the ordinance permits an applicant to officer zoning conditions which you just heard about to prohibit connectivity. That all sounds good to me, but as somebody else said earlier, the devil is in the details, and it really is. Tier three requires connectivity if there are potential public safety issues involved, such as inadequate fire and police protection. And your planning staff identifies a potential safety issue, a neighborhood with a single access point and/or a street serving the neighborhood that exceeds 1,000 feet in length. I publicly challenge your staff or anyone else to produce any research that would prove that a 1,000-foot street is safer than a 1,500-foot long street or less safe than an 800-foot long street, because there is no such research. Yes, the devil's in the details. Use the Pritchett Farm development as a case study. You can expect supporters to, of connectivity to claim that Fordland Drive to Pritchett Farm would make a shorter time for police car response. However, I know from 40 years' experience in policing that response time is much more dependent upon where the police car is when it receives the dispatch than any other factor.
Mr. Tucker, I'm sorry, your time has expired. If you'd like to submit your comments to the clerk, we'll be glad to receive them. Thank you.
Good evening, mayors and members of council. My name is Glenda Topp, and I reside at 4139 Garden Lake Drive. Tonight, I'm here for myself and not Glenda S. Topp and Associates. And I wasn't going to say this, but in listening to Mr. Smith talk about the mall back in the, in the 80s, I guess I'm here also with, when I thought about it, about 38 years of experience in planning, both in the public and private sector. When I said 38 years, I realized, wow, that's a long time. But I'm here tonight to talk just briefly about item C, which is the amendment on the density and dimensional standards. Currently in Cary, density is based on gross acreage of a site, which includes undevelopable areas such as buffers and floodplains and infrastructures such as streets. A potential reversion to minimum lot sizes as a definition of density creates a number of issues, including but not limited to loss of design flexibility to deal with environmentally sensitive areas, loss of flexibility to deal with changing demographic conditions and housing needs in Cary, and third, creation of more future costs and necessary tax revenue to deal with infrastructure maintenance and repair costs for public roads, water, sewer, and storm drainage pipes associated with wider lot frontages. Under the current zoning ordinance, developers and their land planners can cluster development of lots in appropriate portions of the site and avoid environmentally sensitive areas such as steep slopes and other areas that are better left undisturbed or undeveloped. In effect, the proposed changes to the code limit the ability to cluster the development that preserves sensitive areas. By way of example, the regulations in the Southwest Area Plan for land located in the Conservation Overlay District allows for lots to get smaller if additional open space is provided. The demographics of home buyers are changing. Studies show that well over half of today's home buyers are made up of singles, single parents, professional couples, empty nesters, retirees, and moved-down buyers. There are very few homes in the market that address the needs of these home buyers. These buyers either do not want or cannot afford a home with a large yard. They also want a more affordable home that offers the types of amenities that have typically been found in a more expensive home and community. These buyers want to live in a community that offers quality amenities, diversity of architecture, and a variety of floor plans. In my opinion, Cary needs to offer this type of housing. By acquiring a minimum lot size, Cary is effectively requiring, requiring a minimum house price that has the potential of being exclusionary for different segments of the home-buying population. Lastly, by moving to a minimum lot size, the town is guaranteeing itself larger future costs for the maintenance and repair of public streets, water and sewer, and storm drainage pipes because of the extra width that is being required as part of the minimum lot size. These future costs will ultimately have to be met with future revenue streams to meet the town's obligations. To counteract these three examples and others that I have not mentioned, I recommend that the town look closely through the Imagine Cary process to look at areas of the town that are suitable for medium-density residential development where diversity of housing would be appropriate. I recommend that any change to how density is defined go hand-in-hand with changes to the land use plan. I want to thank council for the opportunity to address you on these items, and I hope that there will be additional opportunities to speak before council through the process before this comes back to you for consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Topp.
Mayor and council members, I am picking up a portion of Mr. Tucker's talk.
And could you give us your name, please?
Bob Gates.
Thank you.
I live at 6016 Fordland Avenue. He goes on to say, "Planning has even put to the proposal LDO this language, connectivity will be required if potential public safety issues such as inadequate fire and police protection are present or are likely to be created in the future. If the proposed development does not connect to the adjacent existing development, the language will not give you greater flexibility. It will just result in augmenting about the feasibility of future crime." The way foresee, the way foreseeability is determined is well-established. You look at the level of the past crimes in the same area for three years and for one mile radius around the property being analyzed. I checked with Wake County Sheriff Department and found that we did not have a single crime in Fordland Drive in 2013 or 2014. The nearest crime were three burglaries that occurred 2.9 miles from Ribbon Lane in Cary. What an irony. What that means, there is no potential for future public safety issue for Fordland Drive. That means we would be in tier two. However, when my attorney made an inquiry with the town of Cary as to what tier Fordland Drive would fall under, we were told tier three. A decision obviously made with no data, using street length standards, and pulled from the air no understanding of crime prevention strategy and no understanding of what the factors go into affecting emergency vehicle response time. Please do not let anyone convince you that there is a right way to do the wrong thing. Please do not allow assumptions to be made that are just false. Please do not believe that just your planning staff says a street 1,000 feet long is unsafe, that it is true. It isn't. Please don't allow anyone to tell you that a single-access road into a development is unsafe when there, when that isn't true. In fact, research, research shows the opposite. Unfortunately, your planning staff has informed me that they don't believe in any of the crime prevention through design crap. Until that attitude changes, you can bet you will continue to be involved in conflicts with property over benefits and drawbacks of connectivity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for comments. Do we have, do we need to pull the list back up? I guess, okay. Or the list is actually up. Sorry. Start over there, Ms. Yerha.
Well, my only comment really is on the connectivity one, and that's first on the list. I guess at our work session back in December, I expressed disappointment with these, the new amendment to the ordinance, and I'm still disappointed. I guess my take on, on connectivity, vehicular connectivity, I mean, I have no problem with pedestrian or bicycle connectivity the way it exists today, please. But my take on vehicular connectivity, and this may be an oversimplification, perhaps, but except in cases where there are clearly defined public safety issues, except in those cases, if we have a new neighborhood that is proposed next to an existing neighborhood and the existing residents clearly don't want to be connected, and those folks proposing the new development clearly don't want to be connected, and there's no safety issue, the town should not force them to be connected, regardless of 1999, regardless of whether there's a stub or, or anything. And if there's a process required to do that, it needs to be less costly, less time-consuming, and more predictable than our current process. Now, I realize my views on connectivity are maybe extreme and are certainly, I certainly don't place the value in it that I know a lot of the rest of you do, and that's why I'm saying this could be an oversimplification. But I certainly was hoping the amendment that we were going to see at our work session in December, and it's no different tonight, nothing, nothing's changed, and you did a great job explaining all of these, all, all five of these, Mary, you really, it was very tedious. But I really was expecting to see something more. Obviously, with the tier two and tier three, it's a step in the right direction. I don't argue that, but it's, it's truly a disappointment to me that we're not going farther in, in the realm of flexibility.
Jennifer Brader.
You can go ahead.
So I'm a little bit on the opposite scale. I'm perhaps more on the, I think, connectivity in most ways, shapes, and forms is good. I, and I've, as I've said before on this council, I was on the other side. I was one of the neighborhoods that was severely impacted, and I was one of the people standing up in the audience about how bad this was going to be.
That's when Lori and I met.
It is, actually. And I've come to see actually the light or a change in the wind, if you will. But having said that, there are areas and there are times, and I agree with Mr. Yerha, where that decision needs to be carefully considered by council. And this, and as we've seen in the past, Fordland is one of those. And if you, and I appreciate Mr. Tucker coming up here and using it as a case study, because I think it is a perfect case study for whether or not it would fit within this, the boundaries. And it does not. And I think that's disappointing, because it is a, an older neighborhood, it has, it is in Wake County, it has a very narrow street, and it is not well-suited at this time for connectivity. And I, I agree with you. I believe that, shockingly, that in this case, we should have the flexibility to be able to make those decisions. And unfortunately, what we have before us does not provide us that flexibility. I'm not sure how to get there, but I know that staff has great skill at getting us there. But I'm not, I'm not happy with the way it reads right now. But I'm not happy with the way it reads right now.
Other comments?
Go ahead.
I would agree with most of Mr. Yerha's comments. I'm a pretty just-simple kind of guy. To me, I would love something in the ordinance that says if it's an old subdivision with cul-de-sac, and you're building a new one next to it, you're not connecting to it. To me, it just kind of seems that simple. I would agree that there are plenty of times when connectivity is warranted and makes sense. I mean, every new development we do today, we put street stubs in for reasons because we know the vacant land next to it one day is going to develop, and we're going to connect to it. And I get that, and that makes sense. But things that were developed 30, 40-plus years, they weren't designed for it, like you just said, you know, skinny roads, no curb, no gutter, no place for pedestrians, no safe refuge. It just really makes no sense. I'm kind of hoping what we're going to talk about at the end of this meeting might actually help provide us that flexibility that I think we're looking for. But I really appreciate and respect where staff is coming from and the value they place on connectivity and the reasons why. I mean, for public safety, police, fire, I mean, I get it. But I, too, would like to see a way that council could get more flexibility. And I think if what we talk about at the meeting moves forward, we might be heading in that direction.
Other comments on connectivity?
Yeah, I'd like to mention a couple of things. First of all, I may be somewhat confused, but on that connectivity, can you go back, Mary, to that slide for connectivity that shows us the three tiers? I'm a little confused, because it looks like the most restrictive one is Tier One, and the next most restrictive one is Tier Three, with Tier Two being the least restrictive. And I would say maybe we need to flip those tiers before we finalize, because people usually think of it kind of going in a stair-step-down rather than kind of a bouncy kind of thing. That'd be my first little tiny comment. And then, one concern that I have to this is these very low-density neighborhoods, and I don't know how this is addressed in here, so maybe I'm not understanding, but we, especially in Western Cary, we have stubs built up right against very low-density neighborhoods. And while the people today may not want the stub connected, because the lots are five acres and larger, it seems like it's a, like we saw tonight with Ridgefield, that eventually the homeowners kind of come together and want to put a community in, and then it would be a shame not to have that stub. So I think just if it's not clearly mentioned in here, we need to somehow maybe address that, and maybe bring some more clarity to it if I'm just totally missing it. The concern that I have with this is I want to make sure that we don't make it, I want to make it fair to residents who don't want the stub, but I also don't want to make it so easy to have it waived that applicants who are just trying to get a protest petition removed can accomplish it by promising to remove the stub, and we end up getting a lot of these connectivity, potential connections lost because of that kind of experience. So I want us to be careful about that. And then, the other thing I would disagree with Mr. Yerha on is if the adjoining neighborhood has a stub, and it looks like a stub, and it says "future connection," and a subdivision goes in, we need to connect. I don't like, my big pet peeve is are useless stubs. Stubs that sit there forever, and people park their car that doesn't run anymore on it, or the teenagers hang out there. I don't like those kind of useless stubs. And if we have a stub in place and it has an adjacent neighborhood coming, we ought to go ahead and make that connection. I remember a long time ago when we had an applicant come in with a project, and the neighborhood had a stub, and the guy said, who moved right on that stub, he said, "I never thought this would connect." And I said, "What did you think it was going to be?" He said, "I don't know, I just thought it would always be a dead end." And it just floored me that somebody bought a $500,000 house and never questioned why it was stubbed and not cul-de-sacced. We put the signs there now as a result of that one person who said, he swore to me that he did not know that was going to connect anything. And I think that we have a responsibility for our entire community to connect those stubs when we have signed it and said, "This is going to be a stub." So I don't agree with you about the idea that if a stub exists, we shouldn't connect.
Other comments about connectivity?
Yeah, I mean, I was trying to follow that, and I got a little...
Sorry?
Yeah, you know, I got a little lost. But, you know, to me, the whole intent of the stub is so, the examples you gave, people see that the potential's there. Now, if the market slows down, or the land next to it is not cost feasible to develop at that time, I don't want to artificially connect. So if you're saying to connect just so we don't have stubs, I don't agree with that. I mean, to me, stubs serve as a reminder in a gentle way that nothing stays stable, nothing stays static, you know, things will change. And like Fordland Drive, I guess, you know, I think that's a good example, because as we do infill, we're going to have more of these type things. But as I understand it, nothing's going to happen unless Fordland changes. So you can't make the example of what it is today. We're not connecting today. I mean, that's what I don't understand, and I apologize, but I just don't understand the uproar. We're not connecting. But what we are saying is we can't predict 30 years out, we can't predict 20 years out, and we can't predict what Wake County will do or what Raleigh will do. But when you have an area that right now is very classic of development, low-density from back in the, I don't know, the '60s or so, you know, that isn't the need. But if that area ever changes, you are going to want some protection. You don't want 1,200 feet. Could have safety issues. So, you know, I'm really torn on this, because I don't like, in theory, I don't like connectivity. I'd rather people, I think people in Cary would rather be inconvenienced and drive around rather than have the solution where everything connects and we change the quality of life in neighborhoods. You know, that's the balance we're in. The concern I have, Dawn, is as we migrate back to us making those decisions, or council making the decisions, the whole reason we got it is everything was an exception. You know, we didn't apply a lot of judgment on when connectivity was needed. So we codified it. You know, so I don't know how to fix the problem either, but I think that, you know, and I'm actually looking for your feedback. If you have something that's stubbed, and it's next to something that clearly we're not going to connect to unless the character of that changes, I'm having a hard time seeing the problem. I think part of the problem, at least with me, is I don't think it ends up delivering the types of communities and quality development that I think we're looking for, because you've got those developments with that road to nowhere that stays stubbed for 20, 30 years. You know, the reality is, unless somebody comes in and buys every lot along Fordland Drive and redevelops that entire neighborhood, it's not ever going to change. They might get a sidewalk one day, they might get some road improvement one day, but the layout of that street and that neighborhood is never going to change unless somebody buys everything, levels it, and redevelops it. And then we might find out the stub that was put in 20, 30 years ago is in the wrong place. Meanwhile, the new development that gets built has that stub that dictates how that site is developed, and you end up getting one of those dead-end streets where the kids hang out, or they park the dead cars, or, you know, stuff like that. Are those the kind of communities we want to build all the time? You know, and then also, you've got the psychological security issues and stuff on the Fordland Drive people. You know, this threat always looming over them. When's that, they built that road for a reason, when's that road going to connect? So I see a lot of issues with that.
Okay.
And I, you know, I don't think I have any agreement on this, but I have long thought that when you have a stub that is not, does not look like it's going to be viable, there's a small chance it's ever going to be a viable connector, that the best thing to do is to cul-de-sac it and make it at least around about, because it doesn't have that same kind of effect that a dead-end road has. It looks better, people don't mind, they like living on a cul-de-sac, and it doesn't have that looming feeling like something's going to happen at any time. I mean, I think in that case, Fordland Drive would be a good example. You know, instead of putting that stub and making it look like, "Oh, my gosh, this thing could come any time," put a cul-de-sac right there, you know, basically look like cul-de-sac to cul-de-sac, and then it would really take Fordland Drive doing something with its, you know, the owner's there with its property to ever necessitate a connection. But otherwise, if it doesn't happen, it just looks like nice cul-de-sacs.
Well, I mean, that's an option, or you could just get the easement, and that easement's forever there in case you need it.
I just want to interject, because I want to put on my gale hat. We've gone off-topic for what this particular, we've gone specifically to Fordland, not that it's not a great discussion.
I was just holding up as an example.
I know. And it goes back to the, "When is a stub not a stub?" When it's a cul-de-sac, discussion. But I do respect that staff is here looking for direction from us, and I'm not sure we're giving any direction, except, you know, each of us is not happy with it in our own way, right? Even though I think they're really trying to, you know, translate what we're saying and put it into some words that's, you know, codifies it in a rezoning. And I'm not sure that, you know, where we're going with this.
And I don't think we're going to bring clarity sitting at a council table.
I don't think so either.
This is one of those that probably needs to go to a work session.
Back to a work session.
We can, you know, break it apart into little pieces and talk about what we see.
Right, so in the hope of moving this forward, and we're not here till...
Right.
The end of time. Maybe we could make a recommendation that we take this to a work session to discuss it further. Move that, make that...
I'll second that.
Is a motion and a second?
Yeah, the only discussion is, I think it's very much on topic. I think, you know, I asked the staff way back as the Fordland, as the Pritchett development was coming forward, that once again, we have to look at somehow providing flexibility connectivity. And I specifically requested, based on observations in other communities, that we look at tier. So to me, the timing of the Fordland or the Pritchett property and the problem we have is, to me, what triggered us accelerating this process. I don't think it was off-topic, but I think the right point is that we're not going to solve it tonight.
Right.
I agree with that, and I think, you know, I think, I agree with Ed on this, that it just isn't there with the way it's stated now, and it ought to go to a work session. I support the motion.
And in the staff meeting on Monday to talk about the agenda, I said it ought to go to a work session. They go, "It just came from a work session." So if it's going back to a work session...
Well, that's right.
What do you want them to prepare for to help us at that work session?
Well, I think one of the things that helped me specifically is a number of case studies, right? So how do these case studies fit in to the examples you're giving us? And that would be a good recommendation, or set of examples, to see, is this doing what we hope it will do? Take some examples of some of the rezonings that we've had. I think Councilmember Robinson brought up some great points about Ridgefield being as an example, right? Some of the other ones, Turner, the ones near Turner Creek are great examples, where they've come in, buy other property that's not in Cary, but it's in Wake County. I'd like to see that associated with it. I think we're getting, we're closer than we were before the work session, so it's just a matter of time.
More time in the oven, and it'll be cooked. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on from connectivity, buffer and tree protection comments.
I'm good with that one.
Think everybody's good with that one?
Mm-hmm.
Low-density...
For the most part. I mean, I just, you've got to put it out there, see how it works, and I'm sure we'll be back revisiting that one one day in the future.
Okay. Low-density residential development standards.
I had a question for clarification. The R8 and the TR would modify existing standards to match R12. Is that the proposed R12 or the existing R12?
That's the existing R12, where the plan designation is LDR. In the V LDR, it would be similar, but the minimum lot size goes, would go from 12,000 to 15,000, and the lot width would increase about five feet.
So what would the minimum lot size in R8 and TR be?
In the V LDR, or...
LDR.
In LDR, it would be 12,000 square feet.
The same.
Same as what's above?
It would be this, only for detached dwellings in the LDR plan designation, regardless of which district you're going to, there would, it would be the 12,000-square-foot minimum lot size for any of the districts in the...
LDR.
LDR.
So why would somebody request R8 and TR instead of R12 if they're the same thing?
Well, because they...
Setbacks?
Setbacks, right?
That's the, what happens now is the, you know, one can request a TR zoning district for, and keep the density low, but try to have the other, the smaller dimensional requirements. So it's sort of the, the conditional use zoning district becomes a little bit à la carte with picking a density from one district and then dimensional standards from another district. What this would do for, in the low-density areas, it would prohibit, it would prohibit that, it would provide a constant. In the TR, you know, for example, where you, if you've got other types of development, other types of uses that are allowed, you know, for example, in the TR, townhomes or medium-density, you know, other types of development, it wouldn't apply to that. It would only apply to the detached dwellings use within that zoning district.
I'm struggling a little bit with the R8 and the TR proposal. You know, to me, R8 says 8,000-square-foot lots, R12 says 12,000-square-foot lots, R20 says 20,000-square-foot lots. So I'm not saying I don't like bigger lots, but...
Well, I think I might agree with you on this one. So this only applies to people who have not already rezoned their land.
That's correct.
So Dawn is asking, if this is for land that, let's say, is presently R40, why would anybody come in at R8 if they're low-density residential rather than R12, if the standards are the same?
Well, there may be cases where someone could come in with the R8 and say, "I'm going to offer zoning conditions to have a 12,000-square-foot minimum lot size." So you could offer zoning conditions with a larger lot size that would go with the R12, but then have the building setbacks that would go with R8. So it's, by making these changes, what we're trying to do is keep, it's a way to keep the relationship between the lot size and the building setbacks across those districts, rather than go into requesting a higher district that might have a less restrictive standard in one area, and then using zoning conditions to only pick up that piece that you're looking for, such as a smaller building setback.
And if I could add, you're right. Probably no one would, if they're designated LDR, will ask for R8 and TR, because this is in here. And that's why it's in here. To say that most people, if they have a LDR designation, there's no incentive to ask for R8 and TR, but it's only because it's in here. And if that's council's direction in LDR to only have 12,000-square-foot lots, then this is able to achieve that.
Okay.
So does that make sense? Nobody's going to, this is disincentive for them to do it.
Sounds like it. Okay, so I think one thing that might help us is, at the next council meeting, I would love to see a chart that kind of delineates this a little bit more. And I cannot believe I'm saying this, but this might be more restrictive even than I was hoping for. So, because I think we need to have, like, we saw a very good project tonight that had 10,000-square-foot lots, had 10,000 and 20,000-square-foot lots. And that was a low-density product. It was originally a medium-density land use plan, and they changed the land use plan to low-density residential, and are putting in standards that the landowners requested. And it's consistent from what's across the street, and that would be a situation where it's right. So I think we just need to work on this further and refine it. I think what we were hoping for is that if somebody comes in with R8... I think what we were hoping for is that if somebody comes in with R8 and that is, that would technically, that would be even smaller than, well, I guess it couldn't, it could, the gross could be three units per acre, but they could come in at R8. And I think what we, at least I was thinking, is that if somebody came in R8, then they wouldn't do 5,000 square foot lots. That there would be a certain threshold for how much lower they could go, but it wouldn't be a blanket, everything has to be 12,000 square feet. Because what's been hard is when we get these 8,000, R8 and nearby residents are thinking, yeah, R8, I can handle that. And then they end up getting 4,000 square foot lots near them. So maybe some kind of threshold, and I don't know what's right. I'm just saying, maybe give a little bit more allowance.
Okay. Well, it sounds like there needs to be more discussion at the council level. So maybe you need to move this to that work session too.
Do that too.
And I would just, and Ricky, thank you for your emails today. I noticed we really didn't have anyone from the development community. Could you share a little bit what you shared with me of how you reached out to them and they know?
Based on our understanding from the last work session, we were developing this, one or two of the council members stated that before this went to public hearing, let's engage the development community and get their opinion. And so we have received some feedback and questions about it. And people haven't had enough time to look at it. And we were going to hold a work session, a feedback session with the development community and anybody else that's interested between now and when it went to planning and zoning board. But since some of these are going to work session, we'd have to do it after that. So we can get your direction.
Great. Thank you. So do we need a motion to move this to a work session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's clear just to say we'll just add it to the work session. I mean, we don't need
You don't need to.
Yeah.
I think what I'm, at the end of the day, looking for is R8 is somewhere around 8,000 square foot lots. R12 is somewhere around 12,000 square foot lots and so on. I've always, I've always hated the TR stuff. I mean, I just, it never made sense to me. But, you know, the numbers should jive with the lot sizes. I mean, it needs to be that.
I think we've had some confusion and it's all created by the TR zoning. Because R8, if they do R8, they actually have to do 8,000.
That's right.
It's the TR one that's really the tough one. And that's where we need to focus. And so I would say if they say R8, then they're doing 8,000 square feet and we're good. If they say R12, they're doing 12,000, we're good. It's that TR one that we need to really focus on and say, okay, if you're doing TR in a low density residential, it should be somewhere in the threshold of a third of an acre. It doesn't have to be exactly a third of an acre, but it ought to come somewhere close to a third of an acre. And what that is, is I don't know if it's 5,000 square feet within that or what, but it shouldn't be 4,000 square feet.
Why even have a TR and then why not just have an R5?
Well, we created, you can explain the history on it.
Well, it's just, the TR, it just, it provides a good district option when you want to make some transitions between the low density and medium density. And it's kind of a good fit for lower density townhome developments and even single family developments when there's a right fit. So it does serve a useful purpose, but maybe not in the LDR designated areas.
Right.
So if that's your only direction, we could easily just, just, you know, default and say TR has to be a minimum of 8,000 square feet or something like that and be done with it or
Because I think people use TR because they want to get smaller lots than 8,000 square feet in the LDR category.
Yeah. Potentially, some people, some developers use it because they want the flexibility with the side yards and things.
Yeah.
So if, if you're not as worried with that and you're just worried about lot sizes, then we could just bump that up.
Actually, Lori likes the small side setbacks, but I don't.
I know.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we just need a work session because it's getting late and you
Yeah. We're going to go round and round.
But I think these are very important decisions that we're making too. This is an important ordinance change.
Okay. That's, so we'll just do it at a work session then.
All right. Where were we? What was next?
We're doing trees, we're doing, yeah, here we're motors.
Motor vehicle. Dawn, you've got to have something to say about this.
No comment?
Okay. I actually called and spoke with Jeff earlier today about a couple of these. And one of my concerns was in the bullets for the specific standards that are in the staff report. It says, "The current or previous property owner can provide documentation of unsuccessful attempts to convert the property to a different use permitted in the sub-district." In the case where, that kind of motivated this request for staff to look at it, the property owner's a new property owner. Could he get in touch with the old property owner? Would the property owner respond? Would that guy even provide documentation? I can tell you, over the years, I have met with a couple of property owners and talked about some different uses and stuff, but things that never materialized. So I would hate for that to prohibit or be a barrier that somebody could not overcome. There was another part that talked about a maximum of five vehicles. That was a concern to me. I think, I don't have a problem with defining automotive restoration as its own category, keeping it separate from a pair and not opening up that whole Pandora's box kind of thing, you know? But the stories that talked about, you know, maximum 25% of the lot area. I just, my fear is that we're going to create something that the one automotive restoration business can't meet. And that's, that's kind of my concern. I think he's, regards to the screening, the fencing and things like that, they've done a wonderful job. You really can't see much of it. The bushes that have been planted over time will even grow taller and most everything in the back's going to be hidden. Reality is, it's probably a site that's not going to redevelop into anything else anytime soon. What was the other one? I mean, that was pretty much my comments. And I think we're on the right path, but I just think some of what's here is just a little overly restrictive. So I don't know what the magic number is. I don't know what to say. I'd kind of like to get the planning and zoning board's feedback on it. But I just don't want to go through all the motions to create an ordinance that the existing guy can't meet. Because I do believe it's a valuable act after downtown.
Other comments on that one?
Well.
Hi.
You go first and I'll go second.
Okay.
I mean, if you look at it, somebody made a mistake and now we're creating one onerous code to accommodate that. And those things happen. I think it's good that we try to apply judgment. Somehow, but what it does do is it takes away from what we had planned for that area. At the same time, right now, it's an area that this person has added some value by doing, you know, he's cleaned it up. He's, he's doing something. It just, it just seems to me, there has to be a simpler way to address these one-offs. And that, that the biggest thing is that they are, they may be volatile, they don't last, you know, maybe a, a business where that person is semi-retired, I don't know. But the point is, once it goes away, I want to make sure we can get back to, you know, the, the greater vision that we have for the area. So, I mean, I can live with this, but boy, does that seem like a lot of work. And it's a lot, a lot of work for staff to then define what's right, what's wrong. You know, should it, you know, I remember when you were talking about it, you were saying like, it's, it's just, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was like, it was a one-off. He's only going to be restoring one or two vehicles. And frankly, my reaction is, why are we making it five? I mean, the, the way it was explained that we should move forward here is it's someone that, you know, has a passion for restoration, needed a place to go, didn't know about the rules, didn't know about the guidelines, bought the place, cleaned it up. So I want to have some compassion for that person. At the same time, I want, I want to protect the town if this goes away. I mean, I
Well, I think that's in there because if this, this use ceases to exist for six months, the special use permit is null and void.
Yeah. And I'm not being, you know, funny here, but when you said you had a concern about the max five vehicles, I mean, I had a concern that it was five. So are you having a, is that your concern or is it?
It's a concern and it comes from the fact that I'm familiar with the industry and somebody might bring in a 50, 60, 70-year-old car that sits there and collects dust while somebody spends two, three years collecting parts. I mean, restoration projects, put it this way, I have a '48 Chevy pickup that has been at the body shop now for 14 months because we have had to refine replacement cab parts, sheet metal, spent six months hunting for the metal around the frame of the window. And those things sit there inside the shop covered with a tarp while they're working on another vehicle. Because they're not just going to sit there and twiddle their thumbs waiting on parts. So you can't stay in business that way. So my, my pickup, which is actually a pretty popular truck, even though it's 65 years old and parts are out there, is still taking them 14 months and it, it still doesn't have a coat of red on the body yet. So it's not something that happens very quickly. It's incredibly different than repair. There's not vehicles coming in and out every day. But my concern is the five, if, if you can only have five, then those five, you might not be able to work on them at one time, you know? I think we need to have a little more flexibility there.
And my general perception of this situation is we have someone who didn't do, and I may be wrong, but didn't, appears to have not done due diligence to see if he could operate a business on a site. And now we're changing an ordinance to accommodate the fact that he didn't do his homework to see if he was supposed to be or allowed to be on a site. That, that diagram that showed us the number of auto repair places in downtown showed a very high concentration of auto repair places. And we have often had citizens comment to us that they think there's a high concentration of auto repair or restoration, whatever, auto-related businesses downtown. A long time ago, we made them non-conforming, special use, whatever.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah. That's why you're here. But we all, we also set into play saying, hey, you have your business now, stay. But when you're gone, you're gone. Because we want to use this. Our vision for downtown is different than having a high concentration of auto repair places. And we have a responsibility, in my opinion, to adhere to the vision that we want for our downtown and make decisions that support that. And we have often had cases where we have somebody come in and says, oh, I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't look into the laws, I didn't look into the rules. And, you know, it's not generally our practice to make huge ordinance changes to address that.
I can't argue that they did not do their homework. It's clear. I would be quite as sympathetic if they already hadn't invested so much into the facility. And it's because I know what the interior of the facility used to look like and I know what it looks like now. And after doing my shop, I can tell you probably about what they spent. They're probably pushing $60,000 to $100,000 they've already invested in that place so far. The new floor they put inside alone was over $20,000, I promise you. So I have a little sympathy for an individual that didn't do his, he's also foreign, European, not familiar with our rules and regs over here, was located in Durham, got a realtor that wasn't very honest and didn't do their homework. Oh, yeah, it's zone industrial. You can do it. And they were wrong. So it's not just all his fault, but at the end of the day, the buck does stop with him.
And I would say if this ordinance request goes through, that rather than making it less restrictive, we ought to tie it up and make it very restrictive. So that it permits, if, if the council chooses so, we should do it such that it permits this guy to operate, but not so overly lenient that we can have this going on all over and every one of those dots can exist in perpetuity if one person just passes it to the next person, passes it to the next person. Because that's not the intent of, you know, what we were going for for our downtown.
Well, currently, all those dots right now can exist in perpetuity if one passes them to the next and one passes them to the next and one passes them to the next.
Yeah. I mean, they can if you do it immediately, but if you let time lapse for 180 days, then it's gone.
Correct.
Okay. I think we've beat this one pretty good.
And I just do want to add, I think as we're trying to create a vibrant and exciting and eclectic downtown, I think this is something that could fit into that. It's a unique use. It is something that brings in very high-end clientele, generates quite a bit of interest. I'm not sure how many of you guys watch car shows on TV and all the restoration stuff and such, but it's becoming pretty popular these days. So I think it could have a place in our downtown.
Okay. The next one was technical amendments. Questions, comments about technical amendments?
Yeah. Minimum lot sizes for roosters?
This was, that was an item that was brought to our attention from a neighborhood, an existing R40 neighborhood in the vicinity of Cary Parkway where there was a rooster. The lots were, because it was R40, the roosters were allowed and created some problems with the adjacent neighborhood.
So does this ordinance basically remove his roosters?
Not those roost, not that rooster.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not imposing on, making something that was legal and somebody has invested in and enjoys or whatever they're doing it for and making them illegal.
That's, that's correct. This would, this, it just brings up the issue and could move forward for the future and other, in similar situations.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Okay. This will go to the planning and zoning board for their recommendation and we'll have a work session on a couple of the items sometime soon. I don't know when that would be. Thank you, Ms. Fearman. We now move to discussion items. First discussion item is a request waiver of the waiting period for subsequent development plan application in Canterbury Downs. Mr. Hales present the item. Council may take action. Council is asked to waive the waiting period. Then an affirmative vote of three-fourths of the council is needed, which means five of us have to vote yes for that to happen. Mr. Hales?
Thank you, counsel. And as you mentioned, the next item on tonight's agenda is a request by Inquest Level Development LLC for consideration of a waiver to the one-year waiting period for the recent middle of Canterbury Downs subdivision. That subdivision was seen in December, December 8, 2014 by council. It included seven modifications to the ordinance. And those modifications, with the exception of a single modification to remove a champion tree, were denied unanimously by town council. So this property is located, about 15 acres located Davis Drive and Farm Pond Road. This is the original subdivision layout that was seen in December. As you can see, there are two cul-de-sacs, no connections to Farm Pond Road, no connections to the west. So the connectivity index was also an issue. It also involved the reduction of the streetscape buffer from 50 feet down to 30 feet. The applicant has proposed or submitted a sketch revised layout, as you see before you, and it was attached to the staff report. They have proposed to make the connections out to both Farm Pond Road and to the western property line. The champion tree situation remains the same. However, there is now a community gathering space around two of them. The streetscape buffer has been increased from 30 feet to 50 feet as required by the ordinance. And they are also proposing to make the improvements to Farm Pond Road. As in the original submittal, they were making a payment in lieu for those. There are two modification requests that will be remaining in the revised layout as currently proposed. The first being the champion tree removal that is necessitated by the widening of Davis Drive. And the second is the payment in lieu for the median in Davis Drive itself due to the asymmetrical widening. It's just not feasible to get that median in, given the surrounding status of widening. It is anticipated that if this plan gets submitted as proposed, it will be an administrative approval as those minor modifications to the ordinance would be approvable at a, at a staff level. That concludes staff's presentation. We, and I believe the applicant is still here if there are any questions. Thank you.
And just to clarify what you said right there.
And just to clarify what you said right there at the end, which is important to me. So if this were a year later, we wouldn't be seeing this as it's proposed?
Correct.
So the only question really is, do we want to say, no, you got to wait a year or go ahead because it'll be administratively approved otherwise? That's kind of the way I size it up. I don't know if you see...
There's a single item, like the payment in lieu would still have to come before council, isn't that correct?
No, it's anticipated that payment in lieu will be less than $100,000 and would therefore be approvable by the Transportation and Facilities Director.
Let me ask a quick question about this because I'm just unclear about what I'm seeing. On Davis Drive, is that like a striped area, like, hey, we're paving it, but don't ride on this?
There are some striped-out center areas that accommodate some of the turn lanes, but they're not wide enough to install the full median that would normally be required. Are you talking about along the outer edge?
Uh-huh.
Yes, because there's no lanes to receive those. The widening to the north is not wide enough to support running that lane all the way down. And I can let Mr. Jensen...
So it necks down in the previous subdivision, so, and that lane, that, there's two lanes, and then the right-hand lane turns right into that subdivision, that's immediately to the north. Is that right?
I don't have a picture of what was done in front of Stonecrest, but the road section is not as wide farther to the north based on the older CTP. Mr. Jensen will speak to it.
Actually, the road is widened to the north. To the south is because the through lanes are going southbound, going into Apex. It only transitions into a two-lane roadway. So we have a lot more pavement and nowhere for it to receive going southbound. So that's why it's marked out temporarily now until more widening occurs, as development occurs towards Apex.
So right now, the way Davis Drive is, is you, there are two lanes, and at one point, the right-hand lane becomes a turn-only lane?
Right.
And then the left lane continues on straight. So why would we not do that here where you have the right-hand turn lane turn into Farm Pond Road and the left lane continue straight?
And that's certainly, well, we do have a right turn lane going into Farm Pond Road. It is now, there is going to be a right turn lane.
So you're going to have one...
The problem is, is we have so much pavement out there that, and only, we have probably four lanes of pavement, but we're necking it down to existing, two-lanes pavement to the south, that we just don't have, we have too much pavement that we'd be able to stripe out some of it. Now, how we convert it to a right turn lane, yes, it's going to terminate into a right turn lane, but how we do that is, is going to be the challenge because we'll still have a lot of unused pavement out there.
So once this project is built, Davis Drive will be two lanes until you get to Farm Pond Road, and one of the right, the right-hand lane will become a turn.
It'll have to drop. It'll have to drop, yeah.
At that point?
Yeah.
But it'll be a consistent two-lanes, southbound from where it exists today is two-lanes?
We'll look at the details on that. Again, this is the first time, at least I've seen this, so we'll have to look at that. If we can carry the two lanes all the way from the north down through this and then drop it at Farm Pond, that would be the, that'd be the desired way to do it, yes.
Okay, good.
But I just, we just haven't gotten to that detail. But...
Okay.
But we do have some challenges on, on how we connect to existing pavement.
Okay. And are these lots consistent with the lots to the north and the subdivision to the north?
They're pretty close. We haven't reviewed this plan. This is strictly conceptual plan. I couldn't tell what the lot sizes are, but they're looking at them roughly the same size as the lots in Stonecrest.
Okay.
Can you pull up the previous... This honored the spirit and the intent and all the work that went in for I forget how long between the residents on Farm Pond Road and the previous applicant. This is what the residents of Farm Pond Road worked so hard to achieve and got the applicant to agree to. Large lots adjacent to the existing residential, smaller lots as you moved away towards Davis Drive. I remember when Gail was here and we came through, she said something to the effect, this was a perfect example of democracy in action and how two people, two sides can come together and make something work.
I don't think so. I don't think she said that on this project. I think she did like the bigger lot.
I'm not done.
The reason why I didn't, okay, whatever.
Now, we've got a new applicant that has come in and acquired it and has basically ignored all the previous work and everything that went into it. And it's, it is, I was, when it came by the last time, my one issue was with the 50-foot-wide Davis Drive streetscape. That was it. I love the cul-de-sacs. I love no connectivity to a barn and Farm Pond Road. So I'm not happy.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Go ahead.
Well, I guess firstly, I believe it's the same applicant.
It is the same applicant that came before you in December.
So it's not, it's not a new applicant?
Not the original one, though.
It's not the one that did the rezoning. It's the same applicant that presented this.
It's the same one as we saw last time.
Correct.
My, my big gripe with it last time, the thing I didn't like was the reduction in the Davis Drive streetscape, and that's been fixed. So that's a wonderful thing. What I did like about it last time were the cul-de-sacs. Surprise, surprise, I don't like the connectivity. So now I don't like it for another reason. So it's, I mean, I still don't think I'm going to go for the waiver. I understand it's going to happen if it stays the way it is one way or the other, and it's just a question of timing, but I see no reason to...
And that's an important point to emphasize again. We can say no on the waiver, they can wait, and they can put this in.
Got it.
Yeah, I think it is a...
Put what in?
The other one.
Yeah, can you bring up the other one?
Not this one.
The new one.
The new one.
Why did they not just alleviate the concern we had on Davis Drive? Why did they also go and put the stubs through instead of cul-de-sacking it?
The vote was unanimous on all six minor modifications to deny. So my, and I won't speak for the applicant, he's here if you want to answer that question, but since the vote was unanimous denying all minor modifications, they addressed all of those that they could.
I see.
Yeah, I was going to say exactly what Councilmember France said, is I think the spirit of working with the adjacent homeowners, and granted, they're, the adjacent homeowners to the south and west are not Cary citizens, but the spirit to which they changed it, to have the cul-de-sacs, to not have the connectivity, was what I was hoping to see. I was hoping that what we'd see with this proposal was basically what we saw last time without the Davis Drive. Of course, I, I have to say, I also, there was the Davis, Davis Drive streetscape. I actually liked the elimination of the vehicular connectivity, but I didn't like the elimination of the pedestrian connectivity. So I think what we had was a difference of opinion, but we all said overarchingly denied the entire thing. And perhaps we should have gone point by point saying which ones we denied, but I think we just said we deny it. So my feedback would be the same. I, I can't imagine, you know, a year, waiting a year will probably end up with this, but at this point, I'm, I'm not happy with this solution.
Yeah, my recollection of Gail's opposition to this was the streetscape buffer, the request to not have to do the widening, and the size of the lots along Davis Drive. You know, she was happy with the cul-de-sacs, she was happy with the bigger lots, but there were things that were not met by this original plan. And those are the three areas of concern. It was the fact that they weren't going to widen Davis Drive, which is their, you know, responsibility. They weren't going to put in a sufficient buffer, and their lots were too small right along there. So, and it looks like this might even be more lots than the original plan. Is that right? It looks like it's 28.
I think it's the same.
Is it the same? Okay. So, I don't know. I mean, this doesn't look right.
Not unless they ask questions.
I was clear in my comments at the last discussion that I liked everything but the streetscape buffer on Davis.
Other comments, questions? We ready for a motion?
This is about a waiver.
We even have to take, we have to take action on that?
Are we giving them a waiver? And this is just a conceptual drawing. I mean, can we give them a waiver, but with assurance, like, can they give us any kind of assurance if they want to, that they're going to rework this a little bit?
I think we dictate what they propose.
It's a request to resubmit another plan for the same property within 12 months. All we have to go on is a conceptual drawing and the attachment. It was in your staff report that...
Can we grant the waiver if it comes back to council?
I'd have to defer the attorney on whether or not you have that ability. Are you saying to ask that the plan be approved by council even though it would normally be approved administratively? Is that what I'm understanding?
Have the, yeah, the subdivision plan come back to council for review.
I suppose if the applicant is agreeable to that, that might be acceptable, but truly what's before you tonight is just whether to waive the one-year waiting period or not.
So he's trying to demonstrate that he's listened to us, he's made changes that he thinks would please us. We're responding saying, yeah, this doesn't really please us, and now we're kind of a little bit nervous, and we think that Farm Pond is going to be hurt by this, these changes. So we would like to see it come back. If you're amenable to the idea, we'll grant you the waiver, but we'd like the council to review the final site plan.
Is what you're, I'm going to try to put that in the process space, is what you're suggesting potentially table the request for the waiver, and then the applicant could come back potentially with a new subdivision plan and request the waiver?
That's not what I said. I was saying, allow him to have, to have his waiver, but instead of going through staff-level review of the subdivision plan, have it come back to council as it did before.
I don't think they're looking for that.
I don't think we have the authority to do that.
I think that once they get the waiver, they know they're staff. I make a motion to deny PL 15-049.
There's a motion.
Deny the waiver.
Deny the waiver.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second, Ted.
All right, discussion.
Yeah, the discussion, they can come back and ask for a waiver of this waiting period as many times as they like, right?
That's right.
As far as I know, yes.
Yes.
Is there a preference to do that?
Come back with a totally different concept.
You come back with what, with the previous image showed, with the cul-de-sacs and a 50-foot streetscape buffer? You got me.
And the improvements to Davis Drive.
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yeah, just a concern. If they came back with a subdivision that did not meet the requirements, it's a quasi judicial.
Quasi judicial here.
He really shouldn't be showing you that and discussing it.
That's right.
Are we electors, are we allowed to say, yes, we'll grant them the waiver if they agree to come to council for a subdivision review?
I think if the applicant is agreeable to that, it's probably something that can be arranged.
You would need to be very clear on what you're looking in the change because once you condition it that way, they wouldn't be able to talk to you and see whether or not they're addressing your concerns because it would be quasi judicial at that point.
It's really challenging.
I don't, I don't think so. I think we're very close. I think, yeah, I think we say, yes, you may have your waiver if you come back to council for a subdivision plan review, and our concerns that we want to have addressed are, and we've already stated them, we, we like the cul-de-sacs, we like the bigger lots along the Farm Pond Road properties. We want the road to be done. We want the 50-foot buffer in place.
I think you're just, you're kind of talking about things that are going to be quasi judicial, by saying, hey, yeah, we're okay with these quasi judicial decisions in the future. It's kind of...
Oh, I see.
A concern. I don't, I don't know if you want to go there right now.
Okay.
The, in my mind, it's very simple. It's, I think, as Don explained earlier, that was my primary concern, I think, of others before. And we're not seeing that, so maybe you can get what you want in a year, but it doesn't mean I have to speed up a bad plan.
Right.
And approve it tonight. That's, that's just the way I look at it.
Okay, we ready for call a question? All in favor, please say, to deny it, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion's five to one to deny. Thank you, Mr. Hales.
Thank you.
We now move to item 6.2, consideration of stadium go-pass agreement. Mr. Howell present this item. Council may take action.
Pass everybody off tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I bring to you tonight consideration for a new employee, a new agreement that Triangle Transit is seeking to enter for the use of go-pass program as an employee benefits service for state government employees to utilize C-Trans as a local transit service to commute to and from their work sites within the Beltline or along District Drive during the NC DOT's Fortify/Rebuild project. This agreement states that for any trip made by a state government employee on existing local C-Trans routes connecting to regional Triangle Transit routes to work only, the town will be reimbursed a rate for each trip provided. That rate is based on the C-Trans passenger one-way fare and proportionality of trip volume between C-Trans and Triangle Transit boardings. The agreement will be from the beginning of this year to the end of August in 2016. Staff recommends council approve the resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into this agreement with TTA for the purpose of allowing state government employees to utilize the C-Trans services at no additional cost to the town as a part of the regional go-pass commuter benefits program. Take any questions?
So, so the way I understand it, we will allow state employees to use our buses and we'll get reimbursed, and there's no cost to it?
Correct.
I don't see a downside. It's not like a winner to me.
Now make a motion, a motion to approve it, a motion to approve the state employee go-pass amendment.
I second it.
Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Howell, for waiting so long.
Thanks, sir.
For that quick presentation.
Item 6.3, council initiated request for resolution supports state historic tax credit resolution included in the agenda draft intended as an example only, and the state historic tax credit is provided as information only. With a council-initiated request, council member will explain their request. If the council is interested in learning more, we will refer the matter to staff for report or recommendation. Mr. France will explain this.
Thank you. Obviously, we're all well aware of the discussions these days regarding reinstatement of some form, if not hopefully of the previous historic tax credit program the state used to have. Given what we're hearing, and at least from the state house and the governor, I'm optimistic, but I do have concerns about where this may or may not go in the state senate. At a previous Friends of the Page Walker meeting, we all had a discussion, both myself and Mr. Yerha were there. Actually, was that the meeting? I think you showed up, that Mr. Mayor at the beginning. You should have stuck around. So we just, we felt that it would be a great way to send the message to our state legislators that the town of Cary supports the state historic tax credit program and that we believe the more that our state legislators could hear that the community supports it, the better. So some wonderful folks, I believe, town staff, Charles McDarris, Ed Cherry and others came up with this for a draft. I think, I think it's pretty good. I'd like to propose two changes to it. There is a whereas, where it says describe a recent tax credit project that occurred in your town. I think we just take that out. I think keeps it simpler, keeps the ball moving faster. And at the end, where it says refer it to the Historic Preservation Commission, as Ms. Lana High suggested, that we just forward this on to our awake delegation. I think this clearly sends the message that the town of Cary and the Cary Town Council wholeheartedly support the state historic tax credit program and would encourage them to reinstate it or some form of that. And with that, I'll defer to Mr. Yerha.
Mr. Yerha?
Mr. France said it very well. As far as the two changes are concerned, it's my understanding that the town attorney may have a copy of a draft with those changes in it for our consideration if we intend to move in that direction tonight. I guess the first thing, we need to really find out if we support restoration of the historic tax credit, you know, and so that's an item for discussion, I think, whether we, in principle, think it should be restored. Obviously, if the majority of us don't, forget about everything else. But, but if we do and feel like moving forward, we do have a draft available with the two changes that Mr. France was mentioning.
Yeah, I'd just like to make the point that historically, this council has only advanced agendas to our legislative body that have been unanimously supported by the council. So it's not just a majority, it's usually a unanimous.
And that's actually my biggest concern, is we're outside our legislative agenda. Are we setting a precedence for the future? If it doesn't make the legislative agenda, then I'll just pink slip it and get a majority vote, and we've got it.
Well, I would like to speak to that because remember, we did the shale gas pink slip item and initiative, and actually when, we had a little bit more time than we did, that we did with this one. This one, I think, is absolutely well worth us, you know, use the Disney phrase, fast pass it, right through, because I think it's timely. And I do think our citizens expect us to where we can make a difference and make our voices heard, make that, make that in some way, shape or form, like in a resolution. With the shale gas, we did a pink slip item, staff, we had the time. Staff went out and put, brought something back, and we actually discussed it here at the table and removed a couple of things that not everybody was...
Comfortable with.
Comfortable with. I guess the question is whether or not you... I guess the question is whether or not you agree that it's worthwhile to do, is one question, right? Because I understand there's some people who might not say, I don't believe in the tax credit, and you could certainly vote against this resolution. Or you could say, well, I don't believe that it's worthwhile to do a resolution. And I actually feel that it is worthwhile. We heard specifically from several legislators after we did that, that they were really glad we did it, that it brought Cary's voice, especially with Jordan Lake being part of our drinking water. We have so many amazing historic properties that have been converted into phenomenal places. The Matthews House, the Guess Ogilhouse, the Bells, the Jones House, where Bell is. I really think that if we are so committed to the revitalization and the historic preservation, that this council should speak up. I, I absolutely support what they're doing, even though it's a little bit faster than I would like to go. I think the voice is important.
Well, I can tell you that I support historic tax credits by far. What I don't like is resolutions that make you feel good. And I don't think this is going to change the legislature one iota. They're going to do what they're going to do regardless of what we do with resolutions. And I just don't believe in it. I don't think they're, they're productive. I think it's, I don't want to say a waste of our time, but I don't think they're as productive as, like a legislative agenda, where we put a lot of focus, we meet with them, we sit down with them. I think that's productive.
Well
Sending them a piece of paper that we want this, I don't necessarily agree with that.
Let me weigh in a little bit, because, you know, one of the interesting things about the legislature is that it is extremely fast-paced and dynamic, and you cannot predict what's going to happen with the state legislature. Things come up that you couldn't fathom, either that it'd ever be brought up, or the scope of what would be brought up. And I think that we have to react, and we have to be dynamic and respond. And if a resolution feels like the best way, I, I think that it's worth trying. And I also think that it's not counterproductive. I don't think anybody would then say, ah, got a resolution, now I'm definitely not voting for it. I mean, I, I think it's, it's at least worth trying, and maybe it begs the question if, in addition to doing the resolution, maybe we need to also update our legislative agenda. So that's
If it, again, if it's unanimous.
If it's unanimous, yeah.
Anyone else?
I, I sense that there's a lot of support for it. I actually agree with the mayor, I, but I'm going to be very open. I, I think I'm just very jaded. I mean, I couldn't go to the store today without, I'm, I'm not exaggerating, three people talking to me about the vote in the county, you know, the things that are going on. It's, you're right, I mean, everything is so fast-paced. And that's really a symptom of, of organizations that feel like they're rulers instead of governors. I mean, you know, we just happen to be living in an era right now where we have a legislative body that believes it's their right to rule, and they forget that when they took that oath, it's, it's their right to govern. And, and there's a, it's just a sad situation that we're in, and that's why we're having things happening that fast, at least from my opinion. And I worry, I truly worry about backlash. At the same time, I think it speaks volumes that we're ready to say, but this is what we believe in, and we don't care about that backlash. You know, it's important that you know that we represent, we don't rule the people Cary, we, we're here to govern on their behalf. And, and it's clearly something I think that is valued and wanted. It's what makes us unique and makes us special. It's like, that's why we have appearance standards, that's why we have the things that we do. So I'll go along with it. But, you know, I do, I just, I, I hope it isn't just a mental exercise.
I don't think it is.
And I, can I look for your younger, fresher eyes to keep me, keep me in a positive way, because I'm very jaded on some of this right now.
If this was a partisan issue, I would share, I think, yours and the mayor's concerns. The reality, though, this is not a partisan issue. Passed the House overwhelmingly, I think, bipartisan. Republican governor supports it. For some reason, the Republican senators aren't agreeing with the Republican governor, so, but it's not a partisan issue.
That's fair.
So, I, I think it sends a message. Does it genuinely change anybody's mind? I don't know. Does it make them think about it a little bit more? Maybe, and that's a good thing.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
I make a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
There's a motion, is there
Second.
And a second, further discussion.
Are we clear on, on those amendments? Maybe you want us just
I think everybody got the
On the L. You got it all?
And then the last bit, instead of sending this to the Historic Preservation Commission, we're going to send it to our legislative delegation, just because time is of the essence.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Motion carries five to one. All right, last item, 6.4, initiated request for amending the current quasi judicial process to allow quasi judicial review. Only items an applicant might request a waiver or variance. This is a council-initiated request. Council member France will explain the item. Mr. France.
So you just did. The quasi judicial process is still, even though we've been using it now for a couple few years, it's still relatively new, and I think we're finding some bugs in it. And I think a couple development plans that have been submitted and reviewed in the last, you know, few months, half year, whatever, have, at least in my mind, or opened my eyes a little bit to a couple of the bugs that, that process has, where an applicant might want to only request a waiver for one item. And if it wasn't for, or, or, he might not have to, but he might want to. But if he doesn't request it, then this, his project might just be staff level approved, and council never sees it. But there's the fear that, of coming to council for a quasi judicial hearing to say waive a connectivity requirement, or, or a champion tree, or a buffer, just one item or so. But their fear is it opens up the entire site plan for review, to include density, lots and count, you, you name it, it's all on the table. And even though there might be one tweak or two they might want to make that isn't in line with our land development ordinance, but we want it, and the citizens want it, and the developer wants it, they'd rather just not do it and just get their stuff staff-approved and never have to take the risk of coming before council. So I'd like to just see us send this to staff, let them investigate, review, and possibly bring back to council options to amend the quasi judicial process to allow for quasi judicial review of just a requested item.
Ms. Bush?
He said it all.
Okay. You want to try a motion?
Is there any other discussion on it?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I make a motion to direct staff to investigate and bring back to council options for amending our quasi judicial process to potentially allow for council review of only applicant requested amendments, waivers.
I'll second.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. France. Would someone like to read us a motion to go into closed session?
Yeah, I'll read it. Pursuant to GS 143-318, 11A, 1 and 3, a move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys in the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143-318.10E.
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We are in closed session.[1132.08]